Aloha and welcome to Neighborhood Board thirteen downtown Chinatown meeting. We'll go ahead and call this meeting in order, yeah? We'll go ahead and start off with Mr. Armstrong.
Good evening, I'm Robert Armstrong.
Hi everyone, I'm Kevin Lai, thank you for coming tonight.
Aloha Lori McCarty.
Hi Ross Isokani.
Shulang Shubert Quoc, aloha.
My name is Ernest Carvalho, Chair of the Neighborhood Board. We'll go ahead and start with, before we start with anything, what I want to do is, so I usually send these out to our board members, and I realized that I forgot to put public concerns on this. So public concerns, I would like a motion to add public concerns to follow presentations. All right, any discussions? Hearing no discussions, it passes. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you Chair, the motion I was gonna make was to put that as a specific point, would you like to put it as a new item four on the agenda?
Yes, and then everything else will go down.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and start off with public safety reports. We'll start off with the Honolulu Fire Department, please.
They just arrived. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Bates, I'm the captain at Engine One, right down the street. So I'm gonna start off with the monthly incident statistics for twenty twenty-four January. Okay, we've had five structure fires, zero brush fires, seven nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and nine activated alarms with no fire. We've had a hundred and twelve medical calls, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, three motor vehicle crash incidents, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazmat incidents. So I'm gonna go over the fire safety tips of the month. This month it's don't stall, call 911. Call 911 right away when there is an emergency. Once the operator is on the line, speak clearly and provide accurate description of the type of emergency and the location. Remain calm, the operator may ask for additional information or provide instructions. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception for voice communication, you can text your emergency to 911. If you don't know the passcode to unlock a cellphone, you can push the emergency button to unlock it and call 911. We had a previous question several months ago. We weren't able to make the meeting last month because we had a call. But the question was, what's the status of Kamali Mini Park? Right, okay, so the park is currently under our jurisdiction, but we're in the process of relinquishing it back to the city. So we're gonna transfer for, we're gonna transfer or it's gonna be a disposal. So due to the current situation, we can't commit to future plans on that part, so. Any other questions?
Okay, does anyone in the audience have any questions for Captain Bates?
Yes, sir.
See none, hear none, anyone online have any questions? See none, hear none, any board members? Go ahead, Board Member Lori McCarty, and then followed by Kevin, Board Member Kevin Lai.
Thank you very much, on Kamali Mini Park, do you know which department of the city is going to be transferring to?
No, but I can find out.
Can you please? Thank you.
Board Member Lai?
Thank you Chair, Captain Bates just had a question for you that will relate to some images on the screen here from collected over the week. Proximity to fire hydrants, would an apparatus such as this be an impediment for you or something that your team would call to have removed, or is this not gonna be a problem for you?
That far away from the hydrant shouldn't be much of a problem.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's a nuisance definitely, an eyesore.
We'll talk about why that catches there later on in the meeting. But the second question would be, can you remind us, the public, what exactly this apparatus is and doing next to the hydrant, and for how long might it be there?
Yeah, so they use that apparatus if they need repairs that they might do on the street, so they tap into that, and it calculates how much water they use, and then they get charged by how much gallons they use. So it's pretty common, it's pretty common.
So a commercial user would use that, or?
Yeah, or city guys.
You've already been to?
Just to take into account how much water they use, they may use it, but it's more for commercial contract kind of job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We go with Ross, and then we'll go back with Lori. Go ahead, Board Member Isokani.
Hi Captain, you know, we had a recess last month, so just wanted to see if we could get an update, your reaction on what New Year's was like for your department, was the fireworks, especially the illegal ones that it caused?
We weren't on duty on New Year's, yeah. Sorry.
I'm happy for you.
Yeah, Milani was crazy though, so.
All right, and we'll end with Board Member McCarty.
Thank you, so that contraption that's attached to the fire hydrant, I've run into that in other situations where neighbors have complained about people using it publicly. And so what happened in those areas, I think that they were, you can use any tool to use it. So they were able to then have them put something that required a key or a special tool or something that wasn't easily used by the public, so.
So we actually don't have any say in them using it, that's the border of water.
Okay, that's a border of water question, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, anyone else, anything else? All right, hear none, thank you, Captain Bates, we really appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right, next up we have Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant Segusio, are you online?
Yes, hello everyone, Lieutenant Arnold Segusio representing District One. I just wanted to touch bases on that last question by Board Member McCarty. That is a hydrant valve, yeah, so I know exactly where that location is, it's right behind the poly lungs. And that device at that location, I think is being used by street sweepers to obtain water for their machines. There's also one in front of the state Capitol on the Punch Bowl side. They're in several locations, and I think that's where our city's street sweepers obtain water for that location. And then in regards to that hydrant obstructions and stuff like that, that would be something that HPD would notify bulky pickup to get rid of that couch in that particular. It's also a fire hazard too, yeah, because of the material that it's made of. But let me give you guys the statistics, I hope everyone had a great New Year's and a great recess in January. For the month of January twenty twenty-four, I'm gonna start off with motor vehicle thefts. There were six in the previous month of December, there were seven burglaries, there were two. So they're down from ten from December, thefts is also down, we're eighteen, previous to that was thirty-two. UNVs or car break-ins are up fifteen, and previous month was eight. Assaults are up fourteen, and previous to that was eight. Sex assaults was one, previous month was two. Graffiti cases was one, previous to that was zero. Drug offenses were nine, previous to that was three. Total calls for service for the area was two thousand and forty, previous to that in December was one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. So I just wanted to touch bases, there's a huge event happening this weekend, obviously it's the night in Chinatown. It's gonna begin tomorrow with some lion dancing and for the particular businesses, so there's gonna be some rolling road closures. But the big event is gonna be on Saturday. There's gonna be a parade that runs into Chinatown, there's gonna be a huge stage on Baritania Street if I'm not mistaken. So expect delays in the area and detours, yeah. If you guys are lucky, you guys might see me on a bicycle if the weather's very good tomorrow, but supposedly it's gonna be kinda windy and blustery. So I just wanted to notify the board, since the last meeting, we did get a new major and a new captain, so it's gonna be Major Paul Okamoto. And our captain is Henry Roberts. So the transition of power initiated mid-December, and it's still kinda ongoing. So, but we just wanted to reiterate and reassure the public that there will be no interruptions in service. The major wanted me to relay to everyone on the board that obviously twenty twenty-four is gonna bring new challenges, but we're gonna be able to address them all and address all of those issues with everybody's help, yeah. So the safety tip for the day is more of an info notice in regards to motor vehicle thefts. So there's been an uptick of Kia and Hyundai motor vehicle thefts in the recent past due to the fact of social media, YouTube videos showing the ease in which these vehicles are stolen. So we wanna just remind our constituents to make sure you lock your doors, take extra precautions, alarms, clubs, but more so reach out to your particular motor vehicle dealers, speak with them. Supposedly there's some municipalities in the mainland that are recommending that these owners contact their dealership, because I think it's just a simple software upgrade that can assist in deterring some of these thefts. So just a few numbers, yeah, so from December first of last year to January thirtieth, District One and District Five, which border each other, so District Five is Kali, there has all of those types of vehicles, in regards to those types of motor thefts, we account for fifty-two percent of them. So it's a real hot vehicle to take, and these criminals know how to do it, it's pretty really quick. So we just wanna make sure, you know, constituents know about it and take proper precautions. Other than that, I'll take any questions from the board and the public attendees at this time.
All right, so before we move any further, from this point on, if you ask a question, the question should be one minute no longer than one minute. And I'm asking Lieutenant Segusio to also keep your responses within the one-minute time, okay? Thank you very much, so do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak with Lieutenant Segusio? Hear none, see none, we'll move to online, anyone online who has a question for Lieutenant Segusio?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, can you, I can hear you, and your name is?
Patrick Watson.
Okay, Mr. Watson, go ahead.
Okay, aloha, thank you Chair, and thank you Lieutenant Segusio. I just had one quick question regarding the area along Sumner Street. There is the continuing homeless encampments that occur on the sidewalk, right? Across the street from the IHS and the Salvation Army. And I had to call one day because the camp had gone into the street by about a third of the traffic lane. So I just wanted to get your kind of outlook in terms of how we might be able to make some progress in that area, because I've been involved in cleanups along that area as well in the past, but it seems to be an ongoing problem, and what advice would you give the community in order to tackle that area? Thank you.
Okay, so before Lieutenant Segusio, and I'll allow you to go ahead and answer the question. Mr. Watson, this is a question that you need to address with the Kalihipalama. That area belongs to Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board, that is not the Chinatown Board, yeah?
Okay, I'm so sorry, I always get that border confused.
And also I believe it's District Five Police Department that controls that area. I've been addressing that problem because I work at OR now, so which is the old railroad station for the state, yeah, so. And we're addressing that problem right now, yeah? But go ahead, if Lieutenant Segusio wants to answer it, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Watson, nice to see you again. And so in regards to that, yeah, so any type of vehicle roadway obstruction, you just please continue to call HPD, I know it's a District Five issue, but just realize this, yeah, just because it's just over the border, it doesn't mean that I don't drive that location. So I do take a look at it, because obviously it's something that's very close to us. And then I know you guys participated in numerous cleanups and stuff like that, but after the cleanups, they normally just try to come back, and then they try to build it bigger, better, and more difficult, and make it more difficult for us. So we're kinda also monitoring that, because we're really close to the border. But if you have any types of issues and stuff like that, I know the rail is coming, and I know you're part of that, especially if it's gonna be elevated construction, it's a hazard. So just please continue to call, maybe reach out to Sergeant Owato, and then try to see if you can get CPT involved, the criminal, oh sorry, the community policing team for District Five in regards to that location.
All right, thank you very much. Any other one online, any other person? So I have somebody outside, the name Ross. Can you hear me?
What is your name, please? My name is Henry.
Henry, okay, go ahead, Henry.
My question is, what, what is a suspicious activity when they're trying to steal these Hyundai's and Kia's anyway? I mean, are they just hanging by the door, or are they like using some kind of antenna of some sort to gain access? I mean, what should we be looking for?
Obviously we should be looking for people casing vehicles, yeah, obviously, so those are hotbeds. If you see particular people kinda hanging out near your car, normally they can break into the car pretty quickly, but it's more of the ignition that's the issue, yeah? So I'm gonna leave that to social media, YouTube videos. Obviously these criminals utilize social media and YouTube videos in order to kinda proliferate their information in regards to how to break into these cars and get them started. If you take a look at these videos, it's pretty interesting, it's just part of using a USB cord in order to start this vehicle. So real simple, I mean, everybody's got USB cords to charge their phones. You can imagine how easy and how quickly they can steal this vehicle. And then, and then the bad part is, the auto theft is obviously something that's bad, but the secondary, third level, and fourth level crimes that they commit with these vehicles, robberies, burglaries, is the true issue, yeah? So if we can have our constituents and our community members just keep an eye out. The way I represent suspicious activity, if it makes the hair on your arm stand up, just go ahead and give 911 a call and let us go out there and make the assessment, yeah?
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else online who has a question? All right, see none, hear none, we'll go ahead and we'll move to Board Member Lai.
Thank you Chair, Lieutenant, thank you for coming tonight, just a few quick questions in the minute that we have. I just wonder if the security camera system in Chinatown may have been able to prevent the defacement of this probably pretty expensive sign next to the river. But more importantly, just have a few quick scenarios for you to give some comments on. In general, parks, are we able to start fires in parks? This was a beach park, for example, but there were HPD presence who went to visit the folks who had lit the fire over here, but then walked away without any apparent intervention. I'm wondering if there's a standard protocol for that. Secondly, is this impromptu parking spot an issue with HPD, or is this considered entirely on private property? And then lastly, again, we have some folks who just decide to play in traffic and make dangerous scenes. So if you just wanna take the next fifteen, twenty seconds and comment, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
No problem, I'll start off with the signs. So in regards to the Chinatown substation cameras at this point in time, we haven't received any classes, and I think some of the, if I'm not mistaken, the last time I walked into the office, the cameras were not on. In regards to that, I cannot comment on what's going on with the cameras, I think that's more for the city to answer, the DIT guys. But we haven't received any classes, there is a location and a desk where the computers are at. But when I went in there, the last time I worked, it's about three days ago, the cameras were not on. That sign, that particular sign that was graffiti, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's a construction company that's, I'm not sure which company though, that's just naming the, giving out the times of travel to particular areas due to the fact that there's a huge detour and construction going on in Dillingham in regards to the rail. Beach fires, so beach fires, it's an ordinance that not too much people know about, because we hardly enforce it. It's something that's not usually, you know, prevalent. We go more to theft cases than any type of beach fire cases, yeah? So the revised ordinance states that they cannot be burning fires or open flame fires on the sand portion of the beach. If they're in a grassy area, as long as the grill is over twelve inches from the ground, and it's got sides, and it's reasonable also too, right? Because we have had issues where, I won't say which organization, but they have meetings at Magic Island and in the Alamoana Beach Park area, and they were doing bonfires in braziers, which is an elevated grill. But to an extent, right, I mean, the fire, if the fire is way too big, and then the embers are flying in the wind, it can hurt people, right, I mean, and it can spread fires too, right? It can burn dry brush or any kind of location where it's dry, or fly into someone's face or eyes. So we're just asking them to be more a little bit cognizant of the dangers in regards to fires, but not on the sand due to the fact that the sand usually absorbs the heat. And then we had had incidents where after kids walk over the sand, they get burned, right? Because the sand is so hot, so we normally kinda just tell people that are having fires on the sand to just move the grill, you know, just to move it off and stuff like that. They refuse, then we can pretty much issue a citation and put the fire out, yeah? In regards to the parking, I gotta look at that though, it's kind of a cutaway. I don't know if that part is, the ownership of that is zippies, or it's part of the city sidewalk, and they just made the concrete all the way to the property. But I'll go ahead and check on that. I'll go and make, if I can, you can text me the license plate, maybe I can kinda figure it out. And then in regards to the persons in the roadway, we've been having a lot of begging on Vineyard and stuff like that. So we're gonna advise our constituents also, yeah, not to be providing these people with any type of reason to be hanging out in those locations. There is a law on the books, which is disorderly, yeah? They cannot be asking for arms or be begging on the public roadway. So if you see that type of activity, please give us a call, we'll come out. And just like I said, right, I mean, they see us coming sometimes, and then they hide the sign, they walk off the median. But if, in order to get that offense adjudicated, we need someone from the public to write us a statement, yeah? Unless we see it in person, so we're gonna have to get the public involved in regards to writing a statement for us. I hope that answers all you guys' questions.
All right, thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and move over to Board Member Fitzsimmons, please.
Hey, how you doing, Officer Segusio? Quick question, it's totally related to Hotel Street and the prohibition on civilian vehicles. It's, there's no, a total lack of enforcement. What's the issue? We had a neighborhood walk over the weekend with the mayor, where he walked right by the Chinatown substation, we saw cars just driving on Hotel Street right in front of it. It's a terrible impression, it doesn't give a great impression to the public. And furthermore, right, as I work downtown, I've seen cars almost hit pedestrians crossing from Hotel onto Bishop on both sides by the AC Hotel and by like Mr. Donut. People are almost getting hit because of the total lack of enforcement. And so pedestrian safety is an issue. And this connects to the five hundred seventy-five thousand dollar revenue error that was just reported about two weeks ago with respect to the e-ticketing oversights. This seems to be a very easy revenue collecting process for HPD to do, to just put somebody on, just a guy just right outside the substation handing out tickets, and on top of that, each ticket is an opportunity to check for driver's license, insurance, sorry, driver's license, insurance, check for bench warrants, all these are revenue opportunities here. And instead of taking money from the vacant HPD positions to pay the five hundred seventy-five thousand dollar mistake, why don't we just do that? I guess that's my long-winded question, I apologize for taking so long.
No problem, so Mr. Fitzsimmons, so in regards to the illegal traffic on Hotel Street, yeah? Majority of the time when we do stop these vehicles, it's usually an Uber or a Lyft due to the fact that Uber and Lyft programming or apps don't have the fact that Hotel Street is only buses and emergency vehicles only. Okay, so with that being said, we've, I've made some stops myself, right? I mean, but we usually, for me anyway, in regards to that, sometimes it's just a warning, and we just have them move along. A lot of them also too are military service members, tourists that get lost. What I suggest is if maybe somebody can put better signs in regards to the entrance part by Hotel and River and the other entrance towards Ala Kia and Hotel, yeah? That it should be all bus transit vehicles only, because pretty much most of the signs says no turns. So I think they're confused in regards to that, like no turns to what, you know what I mean? So it doesn't restrict the vehicles from being in that location. In regards to the five thousand seven hundred, five hundred seventy-five thousand dollar issue, I'm not gonna comment on that, that's something that the chief and court counsel probably can answer better for us and stuff like that. And in regards to issuing citations, it's not a revenue building thing for us, yeah? Just realize this, all citations, all of the monies and the fines go to the state. I don't know how it gets allocated back to the Honolulu Police Department, but the more citations we issue, doesn't mean that HPD has more money in its coffers to pay officers or to pay for other things and stuff like that. But you know what, I'll speak to the officers that work in Chinatown, and then let's maybe try to see if we can issue out a little bit more citations so that we can deter this road activity in that particular area, yeah?
All right, thank you very much. So before I go to anyone here present, I'm gonna go ahead and hit up Mr. McDonald. Board Member McDonald, please.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Lieutenant Segusio for being here. My question, first of all, let me say that I'm a big fan of the blue line. Thank you guys for all the very difficult work you do, I know how difficult your job can be, and how frustrating it must be to see a lot of the good work that you do get thrown out in the courts and through trouble with prosecution and the prison and detention system. And with, it's with that in mind, we also know that our legislature is now in legislative session. And we didn't have a meeting last month, but they are well into their legislative session. My question for you is, is there any legislation that is coming up that the HPD supports that this board can throw our support behind to help you guys to do your job better, to keep criminals and other nefarious characters out, away from the public and separated, and keep our neighborhoods safer, and to help you guys do a better job keeping the neighborhoods safe, particularly by addressing crime and those who participate in that activity? Any legislation at all that we can support?
Oh, thank you Kevin, thank you for bringing that up and stuff like that. Yes, the legislative has just started up and stuff, and we're, I'm kinda working very closely with Senator Sharon Morawaki in regards to some legislation and stuff like that. In that aspect of you saying, you know, keeping these criminals off the street and stuff like that, I think that would be more of the prosecutorial side or the judiciary side. I don't think it has anything to do with legislation and laws. We arrest people, when they get adjudicated, that is totally out of our hands, yeah? We don't get to involve ourselves in the sentencing or the punishment phase of these types of cases, yeah? But the one law, or something that I would ask the board to take a look at, because we're finding out that it's becoming a public nuisance, is all of these e-bikes and all of these recreational vehicles that are running on the road, you know, real super haphazard, you see all of these guys doing wheelies, they put it on social media, you know, they just have no regard in to other people's safety, even their own. We started having motor vehicle collisions with these peoples, some of them not wearing helmets, and straight up, they're not legal for the road, they're considered recreational vehicle, recreational vehicle, so they shouldn't even be on the road. Now, for us to enforce that, it's a little bit difficult, because we accept the risk and responsibilities when we try to stop these guys. None of them stop, ninety-five percent of these guys run. So if we could get stricter regulations, registration, safety checks, because obviously these things, some of them go fast and even faster than some mopeds, yeah? So, and they're like literally electric dirt bikes. So if the Neighborhood Board could like reach out to their constituents in the legislature and try to see if they can pass something that regulates those types of vehicles, that would be fantastic. Before, you know, more fatalities can happen.
All right, I appreciate that Lieutenant, I'm just wondering if there's, and I appreciate that, and I'll try that, but maybe for next.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, you asked your question, we're gonna move on at this point. I've got Robert Armstrong and Shulon, and then one more person after that, there's no follow-ups at this time. We are at the twenty-three minute mark on the Police Department, which gives, which we give five minutes to. We're gonna move this on, all right? I do apologize. Go ahead, Board Member Armstrong, go ahead and finish with the Board Member Shulon Shubert Quoc after that, then we'll go ahead and do a courtesy to Harry Cho, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, a really quick question Lieutenant. You know, we all walk downtown and Chinatown, and we all observe how our streets are doing, and for the most part, with such a limited crew, I feel that the Police Department is doing an admirable job. there's a really interesting article this week in Civil Beat by Denby Fawcett I hope everybody read it um but I do have a real concern that Kukui Street is degrading both with the illegal drug activity that is um on private property as well as on the street and the persistent presence now of streetwalkers who aren't really walking um I've noticed lately so can anything be done or can increased patrols be put for that particular street before it totally gets out of control?
Uh that's a very good question because I just actually read that article yeah um and this is how um proactive uh uh my major is uh Major Paul Kimoto had uh forwarded us that 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 article uh to read and then on the next meeting which is tomorrow morning actually uh he he wants us to come up with some solutions and stuff so I sent him I sent them a quick email back in regards to uh some of the questions that were raised um very interesting person Denby Fawcett very interesting person um I just didn't like her first statement about calling um you know Chinatown Zombie Land and stuff like that but so be it right um but in regards to the prostitution and the drug activity on uh Kukui Street I I I made mention to the major that we we should um get uh the Naco Division morals division involved in that location because they were doing operations uh there in regards to getting the Johns and getting the prostitutes yeah uh but just realize this uh that criminal offense is a misdemeanor yeah um so we might also try to take a look at the legislature to try to see if we can increase the penalties for you know prostitution on both sides the Johns and the prostitutes yeah I mean it's 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 something that uh needs to be taken care of and obviously the concerns of people um you know the children walking to school and that's a major thoroughfare from Kukui Gardens to um you know Central Middle School or uh the school over there where you guys are at right now uh but I'm I'm my my suggestion is that they need to get morals involved and we need to do more stings and um you know get these guys arrested um and and um booked and stuff yeah so I hope that that helps we have a meeting tomorrow about it.
Alright, thank you very much Board Member Shulon Shubert Quoc.
Thank you, can you hear me? Yeah, uh I really want to reemphasize the urgency of addressing Hotel Street not Hotel Street other than public vehicles like buses and um public vehicles I observed that a lot and we talked about this for a couple of years now even at the sport that we should find some methods of painting on from River to downtown uh that buses only no cars that will help because I have proposed that for several years and I really like the police department to support this when you go back talking to the city that we need that painted because too many vehicles are coming on to Hotel Street and because of Kekaliki Mall being with so much construction vehicle and being crowded people pushed to the roadside is even more dangerous so please uh look at this seriously thank you.
Uh yes uh Shulon we'll go ahead and I'll bring it back to my major and and make sure that um we address it but yes definitely the signs would definitely help because some of the signs are just kind of confusing when it says no turns um no turns for who bikes cars so and you gotta realize this right Uber drivers the um when when people are leaving the clubs or leaving the restaurant establishments they're standing in front of those establishments which are on Hotel Street and then they're putting their location and then sometimes these Uber drivers who are not familiar with uh downtown Chinatown um they end up driving onto the street uh military service members who are not familiar uh absolutely visitors from the mainland or visitors just from everywhere in the world uh coming into the location so sometimes we 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 make um we make decisions out there like um you know to just you know provide a warning and just have them turn off um it's it's very difficult because the signage is very poor uh it's easily you know adjudicated in court and then they can see that it's 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 difficult for them to understand um so better signs signs saying that and then what I'm gonna try to do is I'm gonna try to reach out with my community policing team see if we can make contact with um uh Uber corporate or Lyft corporate to see if they can um put onto their app somehow some way to establish that Hotel Street between Ala Kia and River Street is uh bus transit and emergency vehicles only uh we'll we'll try to see I I I cannot make any promises but I'm gonna try my very best.
Alright, thank you Lieutenant Segucio um next and final Harry Cho.
Yes, um I just had a quick question for uh Board Member Li uh can you please clarify the location of that message board is that near the um American Savings Bank building by the New Uwana stream?
Yes, it is Mr. Cho.
Okay, um I'm not certain but it's possible but it belongs to one of our construction contractors um so if it is part of our project we can have someone take a look and address that graffiti.
Yeah and then Mr. Cho if there's any um if there needs to be a report made just call nine-one-one we'll come out there and make the report and then um at least you guys have a report number for it.
Alright, thank you, thank you Lieutenant Segucio um that'll be it for this Lieutenant Segucio I will email you my questions okay? Alright, thank you very much next we'll be moving on here to our first presenter we have um Captain Sergeant um Darryl Jones he'll be presenting for Police Week, thank you very much.
Good evening Board Members I'm Sergeant Darryl Jones with the Honolulu Police Department I'm assigned to the Community Affairs Division um as every year we come up in front of you and ask your permission on May thirteenth this year we'll be having our candlelight visual at um sorry at the memorial yeah and we're sorry it's been a long day um if you don't know today was the ninety-second birthday of the Honolulu Police Department so we had a little festival this morning too um but we are requesting the board members give us your permission to shut down basically from in front of the station to the Capitol um the left two lanes just so we can hold the vigil march and we're asking it between five-thirty and we're saying to seven but it's really gonna be once we get off the road we are gonna open the roadway back to the public.
Alright, thank you so first do we have any questions from anyone in our lobby? Nope, not seeing none. Any questions from anyone online? Not seeing any online we'll go ahead to the board members Board Member Shubert Quoc, no?
I was gonna make a motion to support Police Week.
Wait first and second. So I feel we should discuss them.
Alright, alright.
Alright, so do we have any discussions? Go ahead Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair Sergeant can you give us an idea of what type of community attendance or presence do you typically have for these?
Um the last one it was big that we had a lot of um community turnout um a lot of um the two fallen officers recent fallen officers families showed up um one of the first solo bike officers um was a grandfather of a just recently retired major and that was the hundred year mark of his anniversary so the there is a huge um community turnout.
Alright, thank you Board Member Isakane.
Hi Sergeant uh I just had a quick question for you um I know they didn't uh not not necessarily fallen but how are the officers that were shot uh over New Year's just curious didn't get a chance to.
I really can't comment on there um you'd have to ask our news media liaison person.
Alright, thank you do we have any other board members any concerns? Here and non, see non, call for the vote. Oh yeah, any object? Call for the vote please. Yeah, my mistake.
Aye.
He's adopted, approve it.
Alright, thank appreciate it um and if I can just elaborate on what um you guys were asking about Hotel Street uh Lieutenant Segucio and myself we worked Chinatown for years way back in the day um I actually saw a thing on Dateline maybe about a year ago where another state I can't remember which one had a private roadway and because a lot of us use Google Maps it doesn't see that so it took the state their state legislators to write to Google and request it be put on Google Maps that this is a private roadway or it's a bus transit lane only so that way the Google app doesn't figure the fastest route to get somewhere.
Yeah, and that's a good point but that's a good point but I see a lot of these um Ubers and all that a lot of them are local and they do know it this is this is a this is a fact because I will go out later at night just to make sure I see what's happening if the taxi the yellow cab can follow the rules and laws and they know and they do Uber and Lyft cam because a lot of them are local I know a lot of these people they say they don't care they really don't care and that's the attitude and that's gotta stop but we'll work on that alright but thank you very much and definitely be there.
See you guys all then.
Alright, thank you next see so next up is supposed to be Murphy's for St. Patrick's Day um Black Party but they've canceled that at this point they've canceled the Black Party yeah discuss it with you guys with you later yeah so next up we're gonna go to item C Cinco de Mayo. So we have Kelsey. This is why I'm hooking you up with them okay I'll give you the information after. Go ahead Kelsey.
Thank you Board for having me my name is Kelsey Anne I'm one of the organizing managers for I Love Chinatown and we're hosting the Cinco de Mayo celebration on Friday May third um it's set to take place from six PM to ten PM uh New Uwana between Pawahi and King Street and on Hotel Street between Smith and Bethel um Bethel will be Smith Hotel Street will be closed from seven thirty to ten thirty and then it will be reopened and then New Uwana will be returned at midnight.
Anything else? I Nope, okay so do we have any questions from anyone in the lobby please? Do we have any questions from anyone online please? Alright, here and non, see non, we'll go to the board please anyone we'll start with Ross Isakane.
Hi, thanks for organizing the event I know it's a lot of effort and it's great for our community just curious how are things going with permitting with DTS uh where did you encounter any pushback any restrictions and um because again I just want to reiterate thank you for the work you're doing we love community events and uh we want to support you in whatever way some of us want to support you in whatever way we can.
Um DTS is actually excited that we are not having it on Sunday they're okay with us having it on Friday as long as we cease our sound at ten PM and as far as everything else it's still in motion.
Alright, thank you Board Member Shulon Shubert Quoc.
Thank you I just gotta clarify the time because you mentioned ten thirty so I see the brochure as an o'clock so I just want to confirm that it's ten o'clock.
Ten PM.
Alright, thank you um Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair Kelsey Anne thanks for coming tonight you know um if we do make a if you request and we make a motion to approve do you think that your team will be able to confirm for us that you'll provide on six June a written report and follow-up because as you recall the report last year was verbal in nature and was rather lackluster secondly can you give us an idea about the hand correction on the second page the map that we received and then lastly do you think that with this presentation tonight that members of the public are adequately informed of the extent and time and location of the road closures? Thank you.
Um so yes we can come in June and present again to inform you all how it went a written report yes and then the map um the restrooms are at the top they will actually be on the bottom of New Uwana near King Street there was an error when I printed it. Community outreach will begin on Monday.
Go ahead Kevin if yeah if you if you no okay go ahead um Laurie Board Member Laurie McCarty.
Hi there I'm looking forward to it being of Mexican descent thank you very much um and I really like our community to be an international community and this is one that underscores that um so DTS tells you how many special duty officers you would need to have is that correct?
Yes.
Just so you guys know that that's something that DTS does you don't choose how many you want they tell you how many you have to have.
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear but and thank you for holding the event I have no other questions.
Go ahead Board Member Fitzsimmons then we'll follow Board Member Armstrong.
Just a quick comment I totally enthusiastically support what you do um anything that you that I can do to help please let me know um best of luck forward.
Board Member Armstrong.
Thank you I just wanted to forward a resolution of support for the Cinco de Trace uh event um true true thank you um and hope we can get unanimous support for it.
Alright, um any other board members? Right motions yeah okay okay so no other um questions so we have a motion on the floor to go ahead and approve the Cinco de Pres but Cinco de Mayo. We got seconded by Fitzsimmons okay um do we have any objections? Do you object? Okay, so we'll do a roll call please.
Alright, motion on the table is uh general support of the event. Armstrong.
Aye.
Fitzsimmons. Isakane.
Aye.
McDonald.
Aye.
Thank you. McCartney.
Aye.
Li.
Aye.
Shubert Quoc. Thompson. Carvalho.
Aye.
Motion passes thank you we look forward to the event.
And for the record um HPD requires how many um police we need there not DTS?
Okay, alright thank you guys very much now we know it's S R D. Alright, next we'll go ahead and we're moving on to Heart of Honolulu Street Festival on Saturday April thirteenth.
Hello, my name is Sandra Polk um thank you for having me here I represent the Downtown Art Center and Creative Arts Experience we're putting on our third part of Honolulu Festival um it's family friendly it'll be art related and music and food um it's held Saturday April thirteenth from eleven to four PM and it should be a very fun event we're gonna have a community raku um firing so that people can um blaze their own pots we're gonna have the heart strut we're gonna uh have workshops to um build outrageous hats that people and we'll have a parade a two-block parade um with a lot um people walking down the street with noise makers um this is the map on the second page it is from Chaplain Lane to um King Street we are not closing Hotel Street um and uh half a block of Pawahi on either side of New Uwana Avenue we did community outreach we walked to every storefront on in our neighborhood and we asked um our our neighbors to participate in our program um and lots of hearts and for a vendor space so any questions? Well, I came to ask for support.
Okay, alright so um do you have anyone who have any questions in our lobby? See non, here and not anyone online? See non, here and not Board Members any Board Members here any question? Go ahead Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair Ms. Polk can you confirm for the public tonight that this will be an alcohol-free event?
Um um yeah it will we will have no alcohol on the street uh we will not have a bar beer garden you know cut off um it's a daytime family-friendly event so we presume that we aren't gonna go through the hassle of having a liquor license and having liquor on the street.
Thank you.
Alright, any other board members? Go ahead Board Member Armstrong.
I'll make a motion for the board to support. I'll make a motion for the board to support this event.
Within Sean Fitzsimmons seconds. All right. Any discussions? Hear none, see none. Any objections? Hear none, see none. It's approved. Thank you. You're very welcome. Thanks. Thank you very much. Next, we're gonna head up to our elected officials. These, oh, yeah, I forgot. Public concerns that they had put in. Does anyone have any public concerns? Anyone online have any public concerns? All right, not hear and none. I do have one just that I would like to say real quick. First of all, um, we just had our community walk and it was a great success. And I would like to thank everyone that came out, especially all the board members that came out. This was not a board sanctioned walk. It was something that I organized, and I thank you guys for coming. And secondly, I would like to inform this board that I have today done an application and sent in to run for House District 28 as a Democrat. So I am letting you guys know. So since I've just let you guys know this, I have to now open it up. Is there anyone out there online or here in our lobby that also wants to, um, throw in their names? Not, not, not hear and none, not see none, hear, hear and none, we can go ahead and move on. Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a public concern, I guess, for everyone on the board. Uh, since we've been all here, you know, we've been here for a lot of meetings, and we made a lot of commentary about the lack of surveillance cameras, uh, that are operational downtown in Chinatown. We, every month, we make this an issue. Um, and it's still not really getting fixed. It's taking forever. Um, and then I recently saw another article that they wouldn't even have police, uh, police officers in charge of watching and monitoring the surveillance. They would actually be hiring civilians to do so. So volunteers, unpaid volunteers, right? So that begs the question, is this even a priority? Is this even a priority for HPD? Because it seems like they're doing everything they can to avoid getting these cameras up and running and avoid, um, utilizing them to effectuate, uh, a reduction in crime. That's my concern. It's, it's, it's kind of ridiculous to me that it takes this long years and years. We bring this up over and over and over again, and we just simply want surveillance so there's no drug dealing, no crazy stuff going on outside our houses. That's it. It's not that hard. And if there is, someone can see it, come down and address it. But it hasn't been going on.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, board, board member Armstrong or Mr. Armstrong.
Amen to that. And, uh, and thank you for bringing it up because it is exhausting that we are making so little progress. I will also say, and this was part of Denby's, uh, commentary, is, I mean, it was a very small portion of it, is I believe this board said well over a year ago that a volunteer, um, staff of watching these cameras is a very bad idea. I believe we made our comments very clear then. I don't know what month it was, and I didn't look it up to be perfectly blunt. But, um, I still, I, I think it's a First Amendment and civil rights issue. And who's got to listen to a volunteer, um, quick enough to get something happen if there's a real tragedy? And we've seen some this week alone. And so I, I, I think we are in lockstep, at least I hope we are, on this issue. And maybe we can find some city officials who will take ownership of this and really make it happen. Because our frustration level is pretty high.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Board member, um, Quak.
I've brought this issue up a lot because, uh, we funded the police department for, uh, hiring, uh, civilians to watch the cameras and report so they can show up in court. When you have a volunteer, it's not reliable. And you can't force a volunteer to work seven hours or to appear in court if they may have moved. So all of the data is not good, and we need to audit the police department where that $950,000 went because we funded them.
Sort of, and I don't want to harp on the HPD, right? And like, all my comments today have been critical, and it's, and that's not how I feel, and it's not indicative of things. But, um, well, yeah, perhaps, right? Um, but yeah, it just seems like it's, it's not a priority. And, um, yeah, it's unfortunate that, uh, well, it ties into what, uh, the mayor said earlier, right? Uh, the mayor said, well, he was very critical of Chief Logan, uh, and came out publicly and stated there's no transparency here, right? And it emanated from the January 1st shooting. But that, I think, can extend to this issue as well. There's a total lack of transparency. When we ask any substantive questions, we get stonewalled, and we get, oh, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you, and we get no answers. So.
All right. Thank you. I guess, um, board member Li.
Thank you, Chair. And notwithstanding the conversation that you and I had earlier today, Chair, I just wanted to say, you know, everything old is new again. As member Shubikwak said, yes, we did have volunteers watching the old, uh, closed-circuit televisions. Who knows how effective that was, but in today's age to plan to do the same thing again is pretty ridiculous. I've talked with Major Sung about all the software options that are available to help optimize that because it could then page or notify the officer closest to the site of the camera that observed an activity such as that. So forward-thinking is what we need, and hopefully we can convince, uh, a balance of observations of what has worked in other jurisdictions, other cities, what we have now. As far as the camera goes, I'm still confused because the board recalled that, uh, Lieutenant Segusio and I had three months of conversation about why the police guys were watching the game show on one of the three giant screens, where the other two screens were showing two arrays of 30 camera feeds each. So to say that they're not up and running, I'm not sure. Maybe something else about their rotatability or something, Chair, I'm not sure. But again, I think it's the lack of transparency. We don't know exactly what's going on, but we should.
All right. Okay, so Mr. McDonald, okay? Board, McDonald, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just, I'm not seeing this on the agenda, at least not at this point. Or it's just a point of order, uh, and I agree with everything that every board member said so far. But why are we discussing this now?
Um, I agree. I, I do agree. So we'll go ahead and actually move on. Um, go ahead, board member. McCarney, remember, this is public concerns, yeah?
Uh, yes. My public concern is, um, should we establish a pick?
So, um.
On a subject?
Yeah. Yeah, so nothing can be. But, yeah, so we'll, we'll discuss later. I, I've got an idea. But McDonald, do you have a public concern?
No, I was just a point of order.
Okay, no problem. I understand what you said, and I agree. Thank you. All right. So now we're gonna go ahead and move on to our elected officials. We start off with Congressman Ed Case's representative. He's not in our lobby. Is he online? Not seeing him there. We'll go ahead and move on to Governor Josh Green's representative, Sean Hamamoto, please. Remember, these are five minutes, yeah?
Good evening, Chair, board members. Uh, Happy New Year. Uh, Sean Hamamoto with the governor's office. I'll, I'll get right into the responses from the last meeting. Uh, first, uh, board member Isakane, you had a question about the restorative justice program. Um, so the response I got from the Public Safety Department is this. Um, in 2022, the state legislature appropriated $200,000 to the Department of Public Safety, uh, for the restorative circles. The department went out to bid twice, uh, via the RFP, uh, process. Uh, in the first instance, the Hawaii Friends for Restorative Justice submitted a bid via the RFP process but did not provide a cost breakdown of the $4,500 for each restorative circle. Some of the tasks, uh, such as the re-entry checklist was already in place by PSD. Um, subsequently, the department rejected the bid. Uh, the organization did appeal, uh, to PSD's procurement officers, as well as the PSD Director Tommy Johnson and State Comptroller Keith Regan, all denied the organization's appeal. Uh, Public Safety went out to bid a second time and listed in the RFP that subcontracting was not permitted. Uh, WorkNet Hawaii submitted a bid listing Hawaii Friends for Restorative Justice as a subcontractor. Uh, WorkNet was rejected because of the non-subcontracting clause. WorkNet filed an appeal and it was subsequently denied. Uh, to save, uh, the funds from lapsing, uh, PSD will enter into an MOU with UH West Oahu to facilitate Ho'oponopono, otherwise known as conflict resolution, which we believe is appropriate and brings Hawaiian cultural practices to this process. Uh, next, uh, regarding, uh, board member McDonald's question about electricity rates, uh, the response from the PUC. Uh, while there are many things that go into electricity rates, fuel and oil in particular makes up the biggest proportion. So bills do tend to follow fuel price trends. If fuel prices went down, customers would expect to see a drop in their bills. Um, and they did provide a graph and for, uh, Chair, forwarded it to you late this afternoon. Um, but just really, and sorry, I had, had technical issues. I couldn't print this in color. But this is basically a graph, and, uh, these top two lines, this top line here are gas prices, and this is going from 2006 to 2022. Uh, so you'll see this top line representing gasoline prices and the line below that representing electricity, uh, prices. And, yeah, you can kind of see there's kind of a correlation in the up and downs of the graph. Um, Chair, perhaps later if you could forward this to the board members. Um, so, uh, that's the response to that. And then, uh, Chair, um, regarding the Kahali, uh, response from the, uh, governor's office. Um, on behalf of the office of the governor, we sincerely apologize, uh, for not notifying the neighborhood board sooner. Due to the transition of positions, uh, we have been behind on our community, uh, engagement. Um, I believe it was in the paper that, uh, former Representative John Mizuno took the place of the homeless coordinator at the end of last year. Uh, however, this is no excuse, and we will be sharing more information soon about this upcoming Kahali. Uh, furthermore, we would love to hear any questions, feedback, and/or ideas that you may have. That, and that this Kahali will be adjusted to fit the needs of your community. Therefore, we welcome your feedback. Chair, I did, we spoke on the phone, uh, previous, and you did, um, convey your concerns about security at the SNAP office at the ORNL, uh, processing, processing center. Uh, I will submit that, uh, in my next report to the governor's office. Uh, with that, I'm available for any further questions.
So we'll start with our lobby. Anyone in our lobby have any questions for the governor's representative? See none, hear none. Anyone online has a question?
Hello, my name is Candace. I just had a question because, um, Ernest, I was on that walk, um, last weekend, but, um, about this Kahali. Um, we live, my husband and I, and, um, you know, we live directly across the site at 215 North King Street that, um, I guess, um, you know, we heard that this Kahali would be proposed. Um, is this something that the governor's office is going to have, um, community town halls to, um, you know, with the existing neighborhood and the businesses? Because as you, um, you might know, you know, that area, um, is all, you know, it's already very saturated with, uh, with, um, you know, housing provider, I mean, homeless, um, you know, homeless service providers. I mean, is there any other, I mean, have you, have you done any kind of environmental impacts, um, you know, study? Have you reached out to different, you know, the different, um, you know, buildings in the area? The senior center next door, that would be right there, um, you know, American Savings Bank, who is right across the park that, um, is working together with Trust for Public Land and the community to, you know, restore and revitalize that park. Um, is it, or is this something that's already a done deal that Governor Green just hopes to push through?
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, I am aware that, uh, the admini- administration is committed, um, to having, uh, John Mizuno, uh, make contact with the various, uh, neighborhood boards in the affected area.
All right. Thank you. So Candace, this is a done deal. They have delayed it. It was supposed to start on the 15th of January. It was supposed to be up, um, it's supposed to be 10 to 30 Kahalis, which would be between ORNL, where, where you know, you know where I work at, and the senior, then the senior homes. So this is a done deal, but they have delayed it. It's not gonna happen until May. And they've said that this will start in May. So that's why we do want them to come and talk to us, yeah?
Yeah, I've been assured that John Mizuno will, uh, come to this board to present.
You know, I, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I thought that the very original Kahali across from Queens, which was in our neighborhood as well, um, there was, there was an express statement made at that time that we would rotate out of neighborhoods who have hosted it. And I don't think having it on our border, which, um, qualifies as a fair statement by the state and particularly the governor. Um, we've had it. We've done our turn. Uh, give us a break. And particularly with all the good things that Candace said, um, enough is enough in terms of that. And I'm, I've been more supportive than anybody on this board of, of temporary homelessness, uh, homes, uh, particularly at the Queen site. But, um, um, this is ridiculous, and this is the first I'm hearing about it as well. So I, I'm also really peeved that the neighborhood hasn't been properly notified. Um, may I suggest this be in, uh, Representative Mizuno's old neighborhood?
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, and I totally agree with you 100%. Um, is, any other board members have any questions? Board member Li.
Thank you, Chair. Sean, uh, just on the same topic, is, is the site that we're just talking about, is that where the Kalihii Civic Center is set to be constructed? Because we had a series of presentations a couple of years ago.
So, so actually, it's, so you, do you, you know where the SNAP building is? Okay, right behind that, that's an empty lot, and then right next to that is a senior citizens home. It's going right there in the middle.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Sean, for referral to some other, other groups, this goes to, uh, state, uh, DOT. Um, open fences on the areas next to highway where we've seen people, and I've documented here, uh, taking bicycles and things into this area. And again, this one particular gap is at Queen Emma and South School Street. Maybe somebody could go and put the lock back on that, that area. Near that, uh, is an interesting set of concrete bunkers that looks like in the past they may have been of use for a promenade or something like that. Not tonight, but perhaps in the future. If you could give us an idea of what was going on at 623 Magellan Avenue. Because if it wasn't such a potentially bad place, it could be a really neat place to incorporate somehow. But I'm not sure, um, what it was or was to have been.
I, I'm sorry, what did you observe there?
Uh, this very interesting, uh, concrete promenade and, and place where we could have events or something. But it's got stairs down and stairs up and a little bit of overgrowth now. But, I mean, it's kind of a dead-end place, but who knows what it may have been useful for at 623 Magellan.
Okay. So, uh, your question is, is like, what is gonna be done with that?
Yeah. What was it for? What could it be done in the future? Thank you. And I believe it's controlled by DOT.
All right.
And then lastly, uh, another DOT issue is, again, the intersection of Vineyard and Poli Highway. We've seen this gentleman before. We're gonna see him again. What can the state do to make this intersection inhospitable to these activities happening? Sure, there needs to be a crosswalk, but does there need to be all the other free space where people can do a lot of interesting and dangerous things? It'd be nice to stem that somehow.
Um, so you're, uh, in terms of activities, you're referring to?
How to prevent this, this spot from being so easy.
Access.
Right, access to, to be, to have troublemakers there and, and, uh, begging alms.
Yeah, this has been a constant.
Yeah. Yeah, he's really in there. All right. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Go, board member Isakane.
Hello, Mr. Hamoto. Um, I just wanted to say kudos to Dr. Green and his team for the State of the State address. I thought it was excellent. Um, you know, really strong. Uh, I was really excited, um, you know, after, of course, the headliner remarks about the Maui recovery, that the first thing Dr. Green brought up was, uh, just the movement, how he would support any movement to get the short-term rentals, vacant properties owned by, uh, investors, non-resident investors, uh, just to get that back into the local housing market. I was so pleased that he made such an emphasis on that. He mentioned that he's working closely with the state ledge, which, which is great. I'm just wondering, is he doing anything to partner with the city and county of Honolulu lawmakers? Because they exert a lot of power, taxation. I'm just wondering, um, you know, what, what exactly he's doing or, or his team is doing, um, with Honolulu.
Okay, um, just kind of in general, what he's doing? Okay?
Uh, for the, yeah, for the, uh, um, STRs and vacant properties, getting that out of potential non-resident investor hands and into the local housing market.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, not here, I'm seeing any. We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you. Uh, not here. I'm seeing any. We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you very much. Mr. Hamoto. I'll talk to you. Okay. You should, you should have had that better. That we said. All right. Okay. Next we'll go ahead and we'll move to Mayor Rick Blanchardi. Uh, Mr. Sante, are you aligned? All right. Not seeing Mr. Sante. We'll go ahead and move on to, oh, city council, um, Tyler De Santos. All right. Um, we'll actually come back to, um, Tyler De Santos. Um, we'll go ahead and move to, um, state Senator Carl Rhodes.
Yes. Good evening, uh, Chair and, uh, board members. My name is Paul Mendez. Uh, I'll be filling in for the senator for this evening. Uh, to go on his notes, uh, first, he wanted to express that there's a $7 million in capital improvement project funds was released to McKinley High School for improvements to their athletic complex. Next, in response to, uh, board member Fitzsimmons concern regarding the Hawaii public, or excuse me, parole and authority, HPA, and their role in sentencing a task force was set up by the legislator to study HPA's role in setting minimum terms of imprisonment. Uh, to elaborate, uh, HCR 23, which was, uh, during 2023 session was adopted subject task force led by the Hawaii Correctional Systems Oversight Commission, HCSOC, to study HPA setting of the minimum terms of imprisonment. Next, task force report, the task force report is due, uh, 21 of 2024. Carl introduced, or the senator introduced the companion rule, DR 205, and her resolution that was adopted in his committee. And finally, HCSOC has a public webpage about the task force that includes agendas, meeting minutes, and information on how the public can attend. Once I'm complete, I'll drop the, uh, link into the, uh, the chat. So if anybody's interested or would like to go there, they, they can, uh, look through it there. Senator has numerous complaints regarding the feral chickens in the downtown and Chinatown area. Um, as in his past occurrences, uh, uh, he will use some of his legislative funds to have them removed. Um, last week, the Department of Health reported 883 COVID cases with 70 average of 104 cases as deaths for the weekly period. Uh, he encourages you to stay up to date on your COVID shots as well as your flu shots. Before 60, there's a new vaccine for respiratory virus, RV, which is also an idea to get. And lastly, uh, he would like to, um, say that, don't hesitate to, uh, call it off at that 888-586-6130. Questions or concerns? Or email him, um, send R or send sroads@capital.hawaii.gov. And this concludes my time and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone in our lobby have any questions for Senator Rhodes' representative? Seeing none, hearing none. Is there anyone online that has any questions for Senator Rhodes' representative?
This is Candace again. I actually do have a question for Paul because, um, yeah, cause Senator Rhodes is our representative and has been for many, many years. Um, I just want to find out what his position is on HP House Bill, um, 2600 about the legalization of pers- you know, personal use marijuana. Cause I believe that that would affect our neighborhood.
Okay. I'll definitely get that answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, um, we'll go ahead. Um, any other one online? Any other members of residents online, businesses? Not hearing none, seeing none. We'll go to our board. We'll go ahead and start off with, um, board member McDonald first, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Paul, for being here. Uh, just quickly, I would like to address Candace's issue. Uh, Candace, you should know that the senator, uh, supported a bill two years ago to decriminalize all, uh, narcotics of any kind, uh, as long as it was in a, a small amount. So, uh, the senator voted to decriminalize all narcotics in the neighborhood. Um, uh, for Paul, uh, I just want to reiterate that Senator very well knows my, my position here, but I absolutely think that it's shameful during the legislative session that the senator wouldn't be here to hear this board's opinions on the various items before the state legislature. This is the most important time for the senator to be available to this community. And, uh, for him to not be here to tell us about the various bills and, and really to ask us about how we feel, how he should vote on the various items. There are everything from, uh, lowering the blood alcohol content of DUIs to, uh, Second Amendment issues. The senator should be here asking the opinion of this board rather than sending a representative to take notes back to him. Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it. All right. So we have, um, board member Fitzsimmons?
Hey, Paul. Thanks for, uh, addressing kind of, uh, my inquiry before. Now, I fully understand as a task force. My office is actually, uh, one of the criminal defense firms that's in, uh, involved in the task force. That's why I asked the question. Um, I'm aware that it exists. My question is what, uh, uh, what Senator Rhodes's position is on, on the current HPA construction? Um, we discussed this. Hawaii is the only state in the country that sets minimum terms outside of, with, through the parole board. Um, that's, you know, it's, it seems strange that we're the only people that do it that way. Um, furthermore, 50% of boy, um, people that are placed on parole, uh, Hawaii people that are placed on parole probation are placed on that supervision 50% longer than any other state in the country, uh, which leads to, uh, recidivism, uh, reoffense, a whole bunch of things. And so my question was directly related to his opinion on the current construction, not asking for information about what's going on. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. Okay. Board member Shulon Kwak?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to ask if the, uh, senator is, um, forwarding a bill concerning protection of homeowner's insurer so that, uh, they're not blacklisted and not being informed and lose the insurance because the insurance company paid out more than the premium that the homeowner's paid? Can you update me on that?
Yes. So the, uh, the question was if the senator was introducing a bill on homeowner's insurance?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul. Uh, we do have a bit of, um, not feedback, but we're cutting in and out. Um, if we can, if you can turn off your camera, that might help just with the audio, which is most important right now. Thank you. We got a few more questions.
Anyone else on the board? Before we go back to you, Mr. McDonald, I want to make sure no one goes. And this will be the last one. All right. None. And Mr. McDonald, go straight to the question. No history, please. Just straight to question. One minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again, Paul, for being here. Uh, my follow-up question is, what is the senator as chair of the Judiciary Committee, what is he doing to, uh, improve or expand our state's prison system? Uh, our prison system is very, very lacking and, uh, and even the senator has admitted to this on several occasions. So now that he's in session, what is the senator doing to expand our, uh, our lacking prison system? I should also note that my previous question, uh, my previous statement is not just for the senator, but for the other two state representatives that are not here either. It's very important that all our state representatives should be here while they're in legislative session. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll get back to that. Anyone else outside of the board have any questions? I'll give one chance. Not hearing none, not seeing none. Thank you, Paul. We do appreciate it. You have a good night. Thank you. All right. Next is for Scott Saiki. You can find his report on Google. I believe they should be on Google right now. Yeah. So on Google Drive. Yeah. Okay. Next we have State House District Representative Daniel Hope. Seeing any representative in-house or online? We're going to go ahead and we're going to go back to City Council District, um, Tyler De Santos, Santos Representative Richmond, please.
Hey, guys. Good to see you again. Can everybody hear me? Good to go?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, I'm hopping on a little bit late here. I'm at an event right now. Um, just wanted to give a, a couple of quick updates. Um, number one, we got a letter back from Director Sniffen on January 4th. Uh, uh, we had sent them a letter previously asking to add an additional location, uh, for the noise and section traffic camera pilot around the Queen Emma Gardens complex. Um, and he, he wrote back saying that they're working on the, the RFP for it, uh, uh, on January 4th. Um, in addition, a couple of legislative updates, Bill 44, which was the monster home related bill, which has been, uh, in committee for the last couple of months while we, uh, did some more stakelet engagement is, um, is going to be moving. It's on the agenda for Tuesday. Um, and, uh, we expected to pass out then and then in full council and be signed into law. Um, the other thing I'm sure you guys have seen in the news, uh, Bill 40, which is the, uh, small business relief, uh, for, uh, rail construction bill, uh, that just recently was passed and we expect the mayor to, to sign it into law within the next week or so. Um, and then the last legislative update, we just recently proposed Bill 3, which would provide some incentives for, uh, the creation of affordable housing, particularly Bill 7 projects, which are, uh, small or lower density apartments in apartment one zone. So places that are zoned have apartments, but a lot of times, uh, only have, you know, single family homes where, uh, we can, we can build some affordable housing. And 80%, I believe of the units that are built in those, uh, in those buildings have to be affordable. Um, and with that, uh, open any questions?
Thank you very much. Anyone in our lobby have any questions for Richmond? He's the representative for Tyler De Santos. Anyone online? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll go ahead to the board. Any board members? We'll start with, um, board member Shubert Kwak, please.
Richmond, good evening. Um, we are quite concerned about the North Hotel Street having, uh, other vehicles other than buses and public vehicles use it because it's becoming increasingly dangerous. We have, we've been talking about that for years and, uh, seems to be no improvement. So I was wondering if, um, councilman would, uh, propose painting a big white line on North Hotel Street indicating no cars, buses only. That way it will help maybe stop some people from using that as their bus lane.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions for our city council?
Got it. I'm writing it down. Thank you, Shulon.
Any other board members? Board member Isakani, please.
Hey, Richmond. Um, yeah, I, I have been reading about Bill 3, the financial, uh, incentives for the private developers. And, uh, my understanding is that's $10 million of grants. Um, you know, of course, that's in addition to all the other financial incentives that we give our private developers. Now, clearly affordable housing is a big, big issue and we want to address that, but one thing I'm cognizant of is that a lot of these project, uh, these private projects, it's only a portion of affordable housing. I mean, and then the rest are market rate units. Um, my question is, you know, I'm, I'm sorry for the buildup, but UHERO released a statement saying that, you know, we have a big shortage of just local construction workers. So we don't even have enough workers for the projects in pipeline. That would include HPHA and, and things that will give 100% affordable housing. So I'm just curious if there's any discussion about maybe we should focus our resources on projects that are really going to make a difference, like HPHA or maybe Department of Land Management. Thanks.
Right. So, um, one of the things I'll add is that the $10 million that is going to be allocated is something that was already set aside, uh, two years ago, um, for grants to developers. The problem with that, um, is it's a post-construction grant rather than a pre-construction grant. And it's a little bit technical, but, um, basically the idea with using that same pot, but giving developers an alternative pathway to do pre-construction grants. Number one, it would help with financing. Uh, so it would, uh, help with interest rates and things like that when a developer is going to get a loan, uh, which makes the project more financially feasible, especially because Bill 7 projects are a little bit, uh, or, uh, they're tighter at the margins. And then number two, it, uh, triggers prevailing wage, uh, which basically, uh, basically means that what you'll, you'll likely have to get union labor, uh, in order to, uh, in order to build the project. So it, it helps access that labor source a little bit better, or at least paying a prevailing wage to that labor source. And then it also, uh, helps with some of the more financial aspects of, of, of building these, uh, building these, these buildings. Uh, and then the last thing, as I mentioned, I mean, it's 80% affordable. Uh, it's not some of these high density, you know, cockaco, high rises that have, you know, maybe a couple dozen units or something like that. Right? This is a mostly affordable, affordable units, uh, uh, affordable unit project. So if you look at some of the existing Bill 7 projects, you know, you can buy, uh, there's a studio for under a thousand dollars a month or something like that, which again, obviously that's very expensive, but to somebody who is just entering the labor force, you know, say somebody who graduated, a local kid who just graduated from UH Manoa, right? Um, that's something that, you know, if they're getting an entry level job, they would more likely be able to afford without spending more than 30% of their, of their income.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Uh, board member McCarty, please.
Thank you, Richmond. Does this, um, do any of this legislation consider, um, multi- um, multiplexes on one piece of single family property? Um, what I've been seeing in other municipalities is taking something that's zoned for single family and building like a three flat unit on it. Very attractive, but obviously it provides homes for three families versus one family. It's not, it doesn't go over to the monster home area, but it definitely has the kind of dense, a little bit more density when we have so much property that's single family. Do you know if that's included in any of this legislation in rezoning or re, uh?
It's, it's nothing, it's no, it's not touching existing zones at all. So it, it's yes and no. It's not, it's in essence, it's not the same legislation as what you're seeing in something like California where you can subdivide your lot and build multiple units on that lot in a residentially zoned parcel. This is something that's zoned as apartment. And a lot of times on these apartment zone parcels, there is only a single family home that people are using and they may want to redevelop it and to get, uh, a larger use out of it and build. Uh, I believe it goes up to like a five-story walk-up. So that it, it's, it's replacing, you know, hopefully replacing some of those, uh, areas where it's supposed to be more dense, but it's not existing. It's not used like that currently. So in, in concept, it sort of works the same, but it's not.
I think our concept of multifamily is a lot different than what's happening. The new kinds of, um, um, single family is taking up a lot of room. And, um, so being able to more effectively use that without getting to the monster home type of approach is something that a lot of dense, um, municipalities are using. So maybe I'll follow up with, um.
Thank you, Lori. Next we have board member Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Richmond. Um, thank you for the notification about the sound equipment coming possibly at Vineyard, um, and, uh, Poly. That would be really met with great, um, anticipation and appreciation. I also want to note that I went all day Saturday with the walkabout and didn't once mention graffiti to the, uh, council member, but, um, I hope the walls in every street and the growing problem that is in Chinatown and downtown spoke loudly in words that I didn't have to use. My question for you is in words that I didn't have to use. My question for you is, what's the latest on the Walmart property?
I do not have an answer for you on the Walmart property. I believe we, we've talked about this before. I think Ernest would know a little bit better than me. Um, but I can get back to you. I can check in with the council member and get back to you. Yeah.
Uh, so, thank you. Before I get back to you, is there anyone else that has a question? Up here and on, seeing none. Thank you, Richmond. We do appreciate it. Um, Mr. Armstrong, so the property has been sold. It was sold to a woman. And apparently, HPU is working with her. So that should give you an idea to start off, okay? And as far as the walk went, and I thank you very much, because we tried to keep everything on the positive side. Um, I did get a um, email from the mayor's office, um, Mike Promby, after going on the walk, because not only the graffiti, but when we stopped at Sun Yat-Sen Park and all the houses that had retaken the area that I had personally cleaned up, they sent, and they says they've got a lot of issues to work on right now. So they recognize that, so, all right? You're very welcome. Okay, moving on. Next we have Board of Water Supply, monthly reports, Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Thank you.
Everyone, Happy New Year.
Nice to see you, person.
But I was going home and I said, I'm so close, I'm gonna drive here. So I gave a general announcement uh, about the main breaks from January, a month before. So January 9th, there was a six-inch main break on ten thirty, near ten thirty-four Ke Kaliki Street. Uh, and we have one short general announcement. We have a hundred dollar toilet rebate for a limited time. It's usually about forty, I think, so it's a hundred dollars now. So we're providing the customers with this big offer, the hundred dollar rebate on water sense labeled toilets. They're one point two eight gallons per flush or less. So this is more than double the usual ra, uh, rate amount, rebate amount. And it's only offered to, oh, ninety days from, it's only till April 18th. So please take advantage of this. So the special rebate is limited to four per household and ten for commercial customers. So for more information, go to boardofwatersupply.com/rebates. And those be the little details about how to do the rebate. And that's all.
All right, that's it. All right, so does anyone in our lobby have any questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone online have any questions? Iris, no one? Okay, so we'll go to our board members and we're gonna actually start off with Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair Masota. Nice to see you tonight. Um, if I could draw your attention to the screen and the shared image, uh, will your colleagues ever need to get into a receptacle such as this marked as Board of Water Supply, but it's been kind of sealed shut with some tar and some roadway work, I think as a part of a, uh, perhaps this was a root mitigation temporary fix, but would this be a big problem for your guys? This cannot be a permanent fix.
No, you, I have learned that those striped lines on it means it's there for, to notify you that there's a difference, differential in the area of maybe your walkway or something. That looks like a temporary fix. You are correct. It does look like that. If they do need to get into it, whomever goes there would need to take off that asphalt.
Right on.
But do you happen to have the address? Then I can follow up.
I, I can find it for you and send it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions on this? No? Thank you, Iris.
Actually, I heard something earlier. You guys were talking about the meter water. There was a fire hydrant with the meter to measure the flow, so I don't have the information about that, but I will ask. I'm not sure what your questions would be.
Is my? I think the question is, um, can those be um, modified so that they can't have public access? Um, I know that when I was at Hawaii Bicycling League, there was a big issue with bicyclists taking showers or using the wa- the water at one of those, and the neighbors were all complaining. And I know I followed up and they were able to do something. It was a similar situation. So I know we have this down here and it might be helpful if it can be only accessed by people who are supposed to access.
Access it, that, at least the special peers. And I heard earlier, is that something like by Polly Longs? I think I heard the sergeant saying that. Okay. Okay, thank you. Kui, Kui area, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Iris. Thank you for coming in person.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to be here.
All right, you have a great day. All right, so up next is Safe Haven with Greg Payton. He will not be able to make it today as he's on the continent, I believe. So um, his report is on the Google Drive. All right. Next up would be Honolulu, um, Hart.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, uh, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Harry Cho with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. Uh, for my report, I'll be sharing a brief update on the project. Um, there's still active work ongoing in the second segment of the system, which runs from Aloa Stadium to uh, Middle Street. Construction of the guideway is complete and the four stations in this segment are nearing completion. However, our core systems contractor is currently installing uh, the traction power, communication and train control systems, which will be followed by a testing phase uh, similar to what we did prior to the initial opening. Uh, we anticipate completing this and transferring this segment over to DTS for operations around mid twenty twenty-five next year. Uh, moving past Middle Street, we're still in the process of relocating utilities. Um, the utilities in Evile Downtown and Kakako will be completed by the end of the year and the utilities along Dillingham will be completed in twenty twenty-six. Uh, in addition, Hart is in the process of awarding the uh, final major construction contract to build the remaining guideway and stations from Middle Street to the Civic Center Station in Kakako, and we anticipate awarding that contract before the end of the year. Uh, so that's just the broad overview on the current progress of the project. Um, but next I'd like to quickly pass it along to Patrick Watson with our uh, downtown utilities contractor, and he'll be sharing some of the ongoing lane closures in the downtown Chinatown area.
All right, mahalo, Harry. Thank you, Chair. Board members, members of the community, Patrick Watson with Honua Consulting. And on behalf of Frank V. Kalusho Construction, just wanted to provide you the brief update regarding the downtown utilities relocation work. And um, if I may, I'd like to share uh, uh, construction notice update at this time. So let me pull that up for you. Are you folks able to see that? Okay, so this notice, which has been kind of in place since the beginning of the work on Nimitz, has uh, gone through a, a couple of revisions. Um, most currently, the daytime work uh, occurs as usual, eastbound, eight thirty AM to three PM. The westbound uh, daytime work will begin starting next Monday at seven thirty AM and end at three PM. And um, after doing some traffic studies to kind of address the eastbound versus westbound flow in the morning, it was determined that the westbound side uh, had a little bit more latitude in terms of being able to start a little earlier, but the end time will remain three o'clock so people can get out of town, uh, you know, effectively. The night work hours, which is permitted from eight PM to five AM, really uh, doesn't occur very often unless there's some need to do something at night where the traffic may be impacted if we do it during the day. So not too much going on at night. But regarding the traffic lane summary information, and this is all, by the way, available on our uh, eBlast, which I posted in the link just now, so you can sign up for the eBlast if you haven't already done so. And uh, this traffic plan summary states that there's two uh, eastbound lanes and two westbound lanes, which can be closed during the normal daytime hours to facilitate the work along limits in this work zone. Uh, westbound right turns between Ala Kaya Street and River Street may be intermittently closed. Eastbound left turns between Smith Street and Hali Kula, Kalikula Street may be intermittently closed. And recently, uh, we've had closures on the Hali Kula Street, uh, left turn from Alamoana Boulevard. The construction crew began doing the work in that area without taking the closure, but the problem became that large container trucks were um, not paying attention to the safety signs and things of that nature, running over the cones. So for the safety of the crew and the pedestrians and the drivers in that area, they enforced that left turn closure. Um, and this, let's see, the left turn eastbound to Smith Street as well is going to start becoming enforced for the next uh, couple of months intermittently. Um, and then, other than that, I think everything else remains the same, but turn lanes from intersections onto Nimitz Highway and Alamoana from the side streets may be reduced or mit, or uh, closed intermittently as well. Okay, so that's the main updates I wanted to bright, provide for you folks, and I'll stop sharing my screen. And again, if you have any other questions, I posted the email uh, address for our project as well as the eBlast link. And that's my update. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
All right, thank you very much. I do appreciate it. Does anyone in our audience have any questions for Harry Cho or Patrick Watson? Here and on, seeing none. Anyone online has any questions? Here and on, seeing none. I'll go ahead and go straight to Board Member Armstrong, please.
Hi, Harry. A really quick question. In mid twenty-five, when the next four stations are open, that will include, just to verify, the airport station and the most eastbound will be Middle Street?
Uh, yes, correct. So the four stations will be the Pearl Harbor Station, the Airport Station, the Lagoon Drive Station, and then the Middle Street Station.
All right, thank you. Any other, Board Member McCarty, please.
Hi, Patrick. I have a quick question for you. Um, coming down Alamoana, turning left onto Bethel, it's extremely confusing, and now it sounds like it's gonna be closed sometimes. Um, be, between the pavement being all, all the markings are gone on the pavement and the cones are hard to navigate. Um, I don't know if there's anything more you can do, but I'm always confused about if I can turn or not. So if you're gonna turn, close it sometimes, it's gonna be even harder to know. So anything that you guys can think of to try to help that signage would be really helpful.
Excellent. Thank you for that comment. And there will be some future closers, uh, closures proposed at Bethel Street, but because Bethel is a um, a two-lane turn, they'll only need to take one closure while they leave the other lane open, you know, you understand? So it won't be fully closed. Uh, the, unfortunately, at Nimitz, I mean, I'm sorry, at Smith Street, there's only one lane that turns from eastbound to Smith, so that when that closes, then it requires a detour to the next available left. But uh, Bethel, uh, I understand your, your comment about the marking not being that clear, so I'll mention that to the project manager.
All right, thank you. Next we have Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair. I have one question for each of the presenters tonight. Uh, first from Mr. Cho. Uh, the situation might evolve over the next month. So next month, could you please let us know an honest pros and cons analysis of the proposal to merge Hart uh, with any other city entity? And what we as taxpayers might expect from that? I really would look forward to your analysis or interpretation or presenting a position from Hart. And the next for Mr. Watson, can you comment if there's been any reports of concerns about security or theft or any other uh, issues such as that along this particular stretch of uh, construction work? And the uh, the holding pens uh, there in the air that you're discussing uh, this, this, uh, this period. Thank you.
Yeah, so you're referring to the staging yards. Uh, there's one over at Ke Kaliki Street in Nimitz. Um, there's a few over in the next district, uh, Ava uh, Street, uh, Evile Road and Ka Ahhi Street. So there have been um, some incidents of break-ins, but as far as the ongoing pattern of something, there really hasn't been reported to me that there's been a lot of, you know, break-ins or activity in that way. So is that kind of your question?
It is, and also specifically, are there any stacks or stores of the wooden pallets that we see used as the raw building materials for the blue tarp structures on Sheridan Street?
Um, I am not aware of the pallets being used in that location. Um, I do know that in the area of the Ke Kaliki Street Yard, um, we've actually had to uh, try to get some help regarding the trash that's been collected on the outside perimeter wall, because um, there's been some vandalism. People, you know, tagged the wall. Kalusho is then responsible for trying to clean up the area and, and like repaint the wall white, but almost instantly it gets tagged again. So it's kind of a unfortunate cycle that we face there, but uh, we were able to get some attention regarding the trash uh, at that location cleaned up. So they try to maintain that. And I personally walked Ke Kaliki Street and spoke to a lot of the stakeholders in that area, asking them if they see that to please report that activity to HPD as well. Kaiya's Fishing Supply right on the corner, you know, he's a really great guy and I, I, he's kind of my confidant in the area too, so uh, yeah, we try to keep an eye on it with the, the community members. So thank you for that concern.
All right, thank you very much. So I believe, Mr. Cho, it's your turn.
Uh, sure. Um, so Board Member Li, I don't have any um, uh, information about that merging off the top of my head, but I can certainly check with our management team and get back to you.
Yes, sir. Next month will be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other board members? Okay, um, Kevin, um, Board Member Li, did you have something to reiterate to, um, Mr. Pat Watson?
He addressed it about the potential crime and then those pallets.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay, so thank you both, uh, Mr. Watson and Mr. Cho. We appreciate your time. We'll see you next month. You guys have a good day. Right? Thank you very much. All right, so next, moving on, we'll go ahead to um, Chinatown Improvement District. Lee Stack, are you online? All right. The stack isn't here, so we'll go ahead and move on to Chinatown Business Committee Association. Shulon Shubert Quack.
Thank you. Uh, we had our meeting on uh, January nine with uh, quite a few of the stakeholders, including the new mayor of District One, District Six, District One, sorry. Councilmember Six. But uh, so he did discuss his plan about Chinatown Downtown District One, that he will be deploying um, bicycle cops that will address some of our urgent issues. So I was happy about that. And he seems to be um, pretty hands-on about his new job, so I was happy to, to meet him. And also with uh, Captain uh, Roberts, who is an old hand uh, in, in downtown Chinatown. Uh, we did uh, discuss that there's a lack of police patrol. We would like more and that um, I recently just saw a few of the fourth ward young rookies walking, but they were absent for quite a few weeks. So of uh, they were into training and all kind of stuff, so we didn't have police presence for a few weeks. Uh, I have a new announcement, which is the Hawaii Buddha Peace Festival, which uh, CBCA and uh, Widen Seed are co-sponsoring to promote uh, spiritual wellness. And it will be staged at the Chinese Cultural Plaza on August the third uh, from ten AM to six PM. We invite all the religious groups and anybody who wanted to participate to promote mental health and spiritual wellness. So you could have a booth, uh, it's free. And uh, you could promote um, whatever you wish to promote uh, along the Dr. Sanyasen Mall. We wanted to enliven that area and clean it up. So this is our big project for um, August third, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, next CBCA meetings on February the thirteenth, and we'll be at Legend Seafood Private Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Shulon. Does anyone in our lobby have any questions for Shulon Shubert Quack? Here and on, anyone online have any questions? Up here and on, seeing none. Any board members? Go ahead, Board Member Fitzsimmons.
All right, so initially, Chulon, like I, I love what you do, like you've probably done more, well, not probably, clearly have done more for Chinatown than anyone on this board throughout your life. So it's like, number one, you're, you're amazing. But uh, my question is, I've noticed like, you know, word on the street, some nonprofit nonprofits in Chinatown have been opponents to the festivals that we have been hearing presentations on. Uh, first question is, how many businesses are comprised the Chinatown Business Community, Community Association? And of those businesses, how many support or do not support the St. Patrick's Day event that's prospectively planned uh, to occur uh, uh, two months from now?
I really don't know the number, because Chinatown proper is a different animal from uh, Nuano, uh, the Ba district. So the theater and Ba district people are really not the Chinatown proper people. So the Chinatown proper people are the grocery stores, the produce market, and they're not interested in any of the activities that's going on.
So just, so they, so collect, so you're representing to me that the members of the Chinatown, Chinatown Business Community Association does not support the biggest St. Patrick's Day event west of the Mississippi in the United States?
No, I didn't say that. I, I actually supported uh, Murphy, because Murphy is a responsible promoter. I am just opposed to irresponsible and unaccountable promoters, like I would not support the single demure promoter. I am just opposed to irresponsible and unaccountable promoters. Like I would not support the single demand promoter. And I would not support a Hala Baloo supporter because they lied to us too much. And I've been on this sport a long time. I've worked downtown a long time. So I personally don't support them because I knew they lied too much, too many times. And that when they say they donate to certain, there's no accounting of their, of, of.
Well, I want to, I want to focus on the St. Patrick's Day specifically with, if, if, uh, you're in support of the St. Patrick's Day event, right? Uh, would the Chinatown, um, Business Community Association, you know, compose a letter or something in support of the event?
Well, if I knew, if, if it was Murphy doing it and that he gives the, the perimeters and that he's not going to take over the sidewalks and that there's enough ADA compliance, I usually support it. I just didn't support Hala Baloo strongly because the guy lied too many times for 15 years. So I cannot in good conscience support him. If there's a different organizer who's accountable, report honestly, yeah. I'm not opposed. In fact, when I was at the liquor commission, I proposed a theater district with longer hours and more activities because it is something to revive our arts and culture. But right now you look, there's no art gallery. Nothing. So the first Friday kind of disappeared into a drinking thing is no more, no more art. So the art people came and they're not really able to survive because we didn't provide the support. And it become overtaken by the liquor interest.
Yeah, but I think we're getting, but that's, that's far afield from like, I guess, the, the, the point of St. Patrick's Day because we were supposed to have a meeting or supposed to have a presentation today for prospective event next month.
So I thought it then that I, I fully respect our work and I know we're very, very thankful. I've always, yeah, I've always supported Murphy's effort because I've known him for 30 years. And he was also a Chinatown hero, uh, because I support his activity because he responsible. And so I was disappointed that he didn't continue. And if there were other people running it, that is not as responsible as Murphy, I would not support it.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead, um, Board Member Isakani.
Hey, great that you, uh, have a good relationship with our new major and, uh, the captain for District One. Uh, and it's great that you talked to them, um, and got their ear for more patrol. Um, fourth watch bicycle parade, uh, they also have like this new cadet program too. I'm just, I'm just kind of, uh, that's kind of exciting that we could get these cadets, uh, to, to walk the streets and, and, uh, and, and you know, maybe they, they don't have to, uh, actually provide, I mean, they can't carry weapons, but it's just more presence. So I like the connection that you have there. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So moving forward, we'll go ahead and go to, uh, Neighborhood Citizens Patrol, Kevin Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. Briefly tonight, we'll talk about some observations and reports from folks in this, in the area. I don't think we've spoken about the, um, New Year's Eve and the, the smoke. And if anybody had any inhalation or difficulty smelling all the sulfur smell, got it. But, you know, I guess they tried to capture a couple of tons worth of fireworks, but what a dent that made, hard to say. But this was the scene on New Year's Eve. Uh, we've had a couple of comments in the past about the needle exchange van. And tonight we'll look at some of the sequeli thereof. We saw this couch, uh, next to where the needle exchange van sits on, uh, Kakui Street. Uh, sometimes it gets used so much that it ends up getting thrown into the trash around the corner. But the ramifications are, are clear. And again, there is that safety zone around the needle exchange van where we know things like this are going to happen. What happens after that? Well, it gets sleepy time. So a lot of sleeping going on around in the neighborhood, uh, all over the place and, and all the time. Uh, this picture on the right was actually a, a threefer. We got the bird getting fed by the meal and then the person sleeping in the foreground and then another person sleeping in the background. That was pretty good composition. But it can be dangerous. We've got legs hanging off into the street, although there is the, uh, the water retention barrier there around it. Uh, folks are pushing trash left and right, all over, all over town. Uh, eventually it does time, uh, for a bathroom break. I gotta give this guy credit on the left. He was multitasking, uh, looking at his phone. And yes, that is what you think it is on the sidewalk on the right, right where we walked past, uh, the event this past Saturday where we saw a lot of other good things going on around Chinatown. Uh, but inevitably that trash ends up somewhere and sometimes there's crime. We've got, uh, there's hurdler about the cars getting broken into, uh, doesn't happen infrequently. But again, the trash goes all over the place as we can see here, sometimes even into the water. Uh, we had the question a couple of months ago about how to escape from the, uh, New Ona Stream if you get trapped in there. Well, these guys were just actually bridge inspectors. There wasn't anything emergency going on there. Um, but we do know that the police Safeway and Long's area is, is often a rest stop, uh, for, for many folks. Uh, but again, it just seems to be all over the place. This is the site where the Catholic Church will be revamping that three-story building to a multi-site, multi-story residential tower. Uh, and this area is, I believe, right across at River Street from the new senior housing there. So, you know, I doubt that this is the scene that those moving in there would like to, uh, like to address. Remember Armstrong? Yeah. The graffiti is all over the place and still I hope that Wenda is okay wherever he or she may be. This is the graffiti that's right behind the judicial complex on King Street. So kind of get an idea of what they think of the enforceability of the, the laws around town. Uh, and again, we talked about the sign that got defaced on the right. Same gang tagged the building that was bought by the city, the old First Wine Bank, um, near the, the railroad's, uh, stop, uh, which will be converted to housing, I believe, down the road. But again, uh, we'll be able to stop this. Other graffiti tagging signs, if you just want to have a free parking space, I guess this is one way to address it, but I don't think, uh, that's the best way to do it. The graffiti is definitely everywhere all the time. The cow hollow we mentioned, sure. Uh, is that the solution? Don't know. Uh, but it hopefully will help displace or provide housing rather for some folks. Um, we talked about this intersection many, many times. I think this gentleman is actually using a Bible to solicit some alms. But again, if we can find ways to make this not a practical place for this type of activity to happen, that's I think the longer term solution. We've got folks who cross against the lights. You can tell by looking at the stoplights in the background. This guy is definitely going in the wrong time. Uh, this gentleman, as we saw before at that famous intersection, again, walking in and out of traffic, dodging cars. He makes a loop across the street, goes back to the intersection, walks across the line against the light, and then just does it again over and over and over, walking around in circles. Shouldn't have to be happening like this. Uh, the bird report, let's make a public service announcement right now. Listen to me closely. Birds do not need your food. Please. They can and will continue to survive. Don't give them rice balls or any of our leftovers because what happens, we get scenes like this where we got bird flocks in the road blocking traffic. We've got folks who just think that they can't survive. Again, it's illegal to feed wild birds. And, uh, as we keep going there, we'll see that, uh, it continues all the time. Birds are all over the place. I can't really figure this one out though. Uh, there's pigeons in a cage and doves. And then they're using the, the water feeder for the other birds. So it's really confusing. Uh, the roosters, yes. Uh, there has been a rooster at 1171 New Avon Avenue. He found two hens. I think that there, the nest is still there. There might be new chicks coming up in about 28 days. I was working with the owner of the property again to eradicate this rooster as of yesterday. He was no longer there, but people were still leaving water containers for the rooster. Again, the bird doesn't need your help. This is the, what they think they were using to catch it. I don't know. I didn't see any traps over there, but, uh, that was the closest thing I could find. And public, um, television shows, do you know why I left El Salvador? Because of the death squads, but also because of the roosters. So yeah, it's, it's torture. So that's why I advocate and here again state, I will financially support any restaurant in Chinatown downtown area that will serve roosters. And, uh, again, Mr. Tasty is example of this, although I came across it overseas. I think somebody should franchise it, um, and welcome that wholeheartedly. Again, please join us next month, uh, second Tuesday of every month, leaving at 7:00 PM. The Diamond Head Tower Lobby of Kakui Street. Join us, bring your family, friends and a camera. Help us identify areas such as these that we need to point out to our elected officials. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone in our lobby have any questions? Seeing none and hearing none? Anyone online have any questions? Seeing none, hearing none? Any board members have any questions? Go ahead, Armstrong.
I really like your report and I wanted to emphasize that the needle van, uh, the statistics on the number of needle exchanges and it's quite alarming and the statistic of the number of needles that are exchanged and the traffic that it brought to that area. And it was more alarming to hear that they're going to house it in Chinatown, when they're going to house this thing in Chinatown. We don't want it in Chinatown. So I hope that this board will not support the, the move of needle exchange in Chinatown. I think they should go to Ibele where the homeless community is. There's population there, uh, where they have more support system than to be where they are now or in Chinatown because of our school kids and our Kupuna, uh, transferred. So this board should strongly oppose.
If you may address Chair for, for 10 seconds.
Yeah, go ahead.
Even tonight, when I think, uh, the principal of the school was relating to the chair about the difficulties he sees with his kids and the needles in the yard. Uh, we did have a couple of community meetings several months ago about plans to relocate the needle exchange van. I got a commitment from, uh, the health reduction, harm reduction team that it wouldn't be more than 300 meters from a school. So that'll put it hopefully down South Kakui Street someplace. But Ibele may be a, a solution. I just don't know where this thing stand with those follow-up meetings.
All right. Okay. So I'm going to end this one. So, um, just to lay on your concern. So Mike Forman did say that this would actually be Ibele. We, we, we three have been on this needle, um, reduction, um, panel, yeah? And so we are working on it. It's not going to stay here in Kakui, okay? We're going to get rid of it. Okay. But no, we don't want it in Chinatown. I agree. But did not, um, Heather tell us that they're doing a brick and border, um, that might even go into Ka Ka Akko? Yeah, yeah. So I think she said something about that going into Ka Ka Akko, the, and the operation. So, but we will fight for this. We will, yeah.
The issue is getting worse.
Right, yeah. Yeah. So I, I will not invite her for the next meeting. I got the mayor next meeting. That is going to be at least an hour. We know that. And then they got, I got another presenter coming on. Okay? So now that we're done with this section, we're going to go ahead with approval of minutes. But first, I like, I'm going to say something about this.
Uh, just to speed things along, uh, we do not need a motion if there are no, uh, proposed corrections to the minutes. So the procedure would be, all right, we're, do we have any corrections to the Thursday, December 7th, 2023, regular meeting written rec, regular meeting written summary for video record? And then if we hear none, then it's just automatically approved.
All right. So what he just said. Do we have anyone that's making any corrections on the meeting minutes and the video? Right, right, right. And, and all that? Do we have any up?
Oh, this is Candace. I just want to say something about the minutes. Um, I know, um, Safe Haven was on the minutes or the agenda, the meeting agenda, but the link to the Google Drive is broken. So I wasn't, wasn't able to see what they reported. Is that going to be available on the next minutes?
So, um, we'll go ahead and check that because I just used the Google Drive earlier, yeah? And it was working.
Hi Candace. Um, so in, in the event that any of those direct links don't work, what we put at the top of the agendas and the minutes is the general link. And that'll give you access to every single folder, you know, each year as we go on and each month. So you should still have access that way. But I apologize if any of the links didn't take you directly to the report.
Thank you.
Okay. You're very welcome. Uh, so do, is?
It's a technical issue and I appreciate the comment from Ms. Candace. I will endeavor to repair whatever link was not there for what gets republished to the, the site. But it shouldn't change the content of what's in the written record itself.
Okay. So, so once again, anyone have any corrections to be, be made on this minutes?
I departed evil four. I was still throughout the whole meeting. There you said I departed at evil four. I was sick, but I was still there. You adjourned the meeting. No, I was on, uh, hybrid. I was on the phone.
I think, if I may, Chair, I think there was a, a vote for which there was not a record of a, of, 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 record of a vote by Member Shubekwak at that time.
Yeah, there was a vote.
Yeah. So, uh, we did.
When we do the roll call, um, there's times where like if you're virtual, you might walk away or if you're in person and you go to the bathroom or something.
Something, but I, I was present for the whole meeting on stake.
Well, we got, we got your attendance. So no strike on you.
All right. So, so, okay. So there's no objections, right?
I, I, if, if, if there's no objection from the rest of the board and Member Shubekwak attested being present, but simply not voting, I'm happy to strike those two lines that indicate her departure and return.
Okay. Okay. So we can still move on then. So no objections. Final. All right. So we are, minutes are approved. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. All right. So now we'll go ahead. We're now moving on to new business. Next, you, this is a motion to establish a permitted interaction group, also known as a PIG, to gather information and bringing events to downtown Chinatown. Hope everybody went to the Google Drive to check it out. Go ahead, Lori McCartney, please.
Sure. Um, so anybody on, you know, anything to refer to, walk through it? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Um, so the idea generally is that I know that Waiki has a lot of events and parades and, and I also know that they have a limit on how many they can have. So when you think about where else might an event go or a parade go, why not downtown Chinatown? We're centrally located. We have the historic district. We have a lot of businesses and what have you. So the idea is to establish a, um, PIG, which is crummy name for permitted interaction group, um, to do the exploration of that. So not have any firm recommendations or actions taking on that. That's, that's really to do the legwork before and then be, be able to bring it to the board so that the board can make a decision on any, any action that we may want to take. So the PIG needs to have, um, can only have four members. I would like to be one of those. Our scope is, as I said, it's back, back finding. Um, the, the, the idea is we need to meet with several different people and we need to understand and sort of see if we can outline our plan. So if somebody was going to do an event, they'd have to say, okay, what streets? How long is it? What are the facilities? What are the parking? You know, so I think we want to be able to present somebody with a plan. To do that, we need to go to the street, um, to DTS, to their street permitting and work with them and, and develop one or two options maybe for what a plan could be. Kalaka was easy. Everybody knows that. Here in order to get two miles, I think is probably, um, the length, but we'll find out. In order to do that, then we have to figure out how might that work? Um, so in that sense, then getting, once we have one or two plans, then we go to the community. And with the community, talk to them about it. See what the concerns or excitement or whatever is, uh, so that we can get the community input in, in sort of fine tuning that. We also then, um, talk to the Waiki neighborhood board to learn a little bit more about what they run into and what the issues and opportunities are there. And then we also meet with the mayor, city council, house, house and senate, different public officials to see support for that. The net recommendation then would be, this is something that we want to pursue. Here's what we've, or not. We either abandon it at the end of the PIG. We say, we can't get, make any progress on it. More investigation is needed, or this is a recommendation to the board. And at that point, then the board, uh, takes that, takes over. The PIG is dissolved. And, um, it goes right into, uh, uh, hollow hollow PIG, I guess. Okay.
Okay. So I, I, I do appreciate that. Hope, I would have hoped that everybody would have read the report, which was online. Um, I did believe that, um, I did want, I, I thought I made it explicitly clear that I did want, um, Lori to, um, head this up and that Bob Armstrong would also be on it. And we had two more people that can be on because it's four people, including the person that's going to be the chair, which, uh, that I had, um, asked Lori to be the chair and Robert Armstrong had asked strongly to be on this, which I agreed. Um, so we have to know it's to be four people. But at this point, this is, um, a motion. Um, do we have a motion to?
Yeah. Let me discuss first, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thanks. I, I would just, I think Lori, this is so well, um, documented and, uh, proposed. Thank you for doing the heavy lifting here. Um, I Um, I would just add two small things. I believe you might have said this, but, uh, if not, I'm just reiterating it one more time is after today's news, we need to look at regulations and what, what might be in the way for some people who want to have a parade or an event and, and just put that on the record. And second of all, because I think that they could be an important funding source, we need to make sure that we include the Tourism Authority with whatever we're factfinding to make sure that they're involved too. And I just think you did a great job.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
All right.
Um, I've done events before, so, um, one of the things I know is how the process works and, um, how you can get told no. And, um, the checklist and everything and what a, what somebody who's gonna do an event or parade has to do. Uh, so I think in that, that's a great idea to get HTA involved. Most, most of the people who put on events and parades, they get them involved.
Yeah.
Right? Because they're looking to support it. They have to pay for HPD, they have to pay for all of the, uh, different resources. But I think, for example, Spam Jam would be good down, you know, down here. You know, so there's, there's, um, there's probably, and I, this is just my hunch, is that there's the, there's probably as many events that happen in Waikiki that don't happen in Waikiki that would like to happen. And if we can develop a, a good plan for them, that maybe we can, uh, do things that are daytime, you know, more and more family oriented and sort of balance out some of the other things we do.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, I'm Shubert Quack.
Lori, this is good idea to have a PIG because we need to establish what our expectations from the community as representative of constituents here. So it's a business and densely populated, uh, people. So we need to set the, um, boundaries for like a type of activities, how long and, uh, how many people we're gonna attract and the safety issues. And, um, also because the streets are narrow, therefore, you know, ADA, uh, compliance would often be neglected. Uh, people can't get into their buildings because the both sidewalks are taken over. Uh, I had serious talk with Murphy, even though he's a friend of mine, that, that happened many times over at his end of the street that you cannot get through to limits from when they, 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 um, fill it up with all the, uh, drains and coolers and everything. So it's very difficult for handicapped people. And then also notice to the public that there should be at least two months' notice to this board to study and have questions and whether the affected people are informed. And DTS need to hear public input from the community, not just this board, because there are a lot of people in this board may have public interest, who work for the body industry or who have business interest, so they do have some self-interest issues. So I think that the public input is important, whether how many people they want and how big of an event they want and how late they want it.
Absolutely. And I think that's why there's so much factfinding to be done, because we don't know. Um, so that's why we have to talk, we have to find out what does an event organizer need, what do we think might work? And then we talk to the community and we figure out if it can work or not. And so just remember on the parade that we're gonna have, when is that?
Saturday, Saturday.
Yeah.
It's jammed. And, uh, so I think it's a good opportunity to look at it and say, you know, because Hotel Street is the, sort of a logical street, but it may be that it's not big enough and maybe something that's gonna take King and Kalakaua, I mean, King and, um, Beartania.
It's a lot of funding to do as well.
Okay.
Yes, it is very difficult. So what, what I was...
Shulon, Shulon, before you go on any further, ask anybody else on this board, do you have a question? Go ahead.
For one first comment, amazing Lori, solely in support, would love to be part of it. Um, number two, yeah, I, I have a question. I, I really would be interested in seeing how different events are approved. Like Chinatown, the, the Chinese New Year event is the biggest one we have all year. It's huge, it is amazing, it is awesome. But it seems like allowances are made for that event that aren't made for other events.
Right, correct.
And so the issues that are, get brought up as disqualifying factors for Hala Baloo, um, whatever, right, are, uh, not raised with respect to the Chinatown New Year celebration. And I wanna, I wanna understand what and why that is and if that's true.
Okay, all right. No, 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 no. We don't need that. What we need right now is we need to go to the next person. Go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair, and, uh, thank you Lori for drafting the document here. I just want to reiterate to the board that a PIG, even though it will involve up to four of our members, it really involves the entire board because there are certain things that we can and cannot do once the PIG is enacted. So people around the PIG can't talk to the rest of us about what you guys might be working on or looking at. So we have to remember that it's, a- anything in HRS 92 that we all need to read and reread. Other things, a PIG can lose a member, but we can't add or replace a member. So make sure you're aware of your commitments coming up. And then lastly, Lori, do you feel that, again, if we get to an actual motion, has the definition of what the PIG will be looking at, its scope? Is it well enough, uh, defined so that you won't be going astray or out of bounds, so to speak, when you make your reports on the subsequent meetings?
I believe it's as defined as it can be right now. I think that there's levels below sort of some of the, some of the actions we're gonna take. It could be that we say, yeah, we're gonna meet with the permitting people and they say, no, you need to go meet with these other people. So I think some of the discussions of these broad outlines of people to meet with are correct and guide the PIG, uh, but there can be more layers below that. If there's, um, another category of group that we need, that we should be talking to, then I think that should, could be added before the PIG is established.
All right, so I wanna end this, um, discussion right now. So thank you for what you did. Uh, it was beautiful. Um, you did, well job, we did understand what you said, we heard you said. Okay, so let's, um, go this way. You're gonna get one more chance to do this, but not until this portion goes over. So we're, we're done with this portion. Now unfortunately, we, we need to do a motion. Someone needs, um, have a motion to go ahead and move this forward and second it. Because after we do that, then I have to call for another discussion because I made a motion, okay? So that's, stop that so we can, we can get involved with. Is there a motion to move this forward?
If anyone can make that motion, I will, Mr. Chair, to, uh, set up a, uh, permitted interaction group, uh, to take a look at bringing more events to the Chinatown downtown area.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Sean Fitzsimmons? Thank you. We have a second. Now we can go on to discussions. That's why I wanted to go and make a motion first, so we'd have to go again to the discussions again, right?
I think, uh, our, part of the, the PIG to set up the boundaries is also the 30-day report of an event promoter and that they need to show some statistics and that we actually need some proof, because we've been lied to too often that they donate to this, they do this, we never see any numbers. They always say they're losing money or whatever. And the other thing is, when they're using public streets, they cannot charge people a fee to participate. And, um, if they're gonna have a beer garden is to, to control the liquor, it's not to, not allow the public, because they don't pay rent for the street. So it's a public event that they cannot charge $15, $25, $75 for wristband. So this is why, uh, we need to establish that it's a free street, public street, it's our next best, right? And they cannot charge people money for coming to the event.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Lori.
Um, this is not going out and soliciting events. This is a PIG to determine if that's something that we want, that we can put together in a way that's going to work. So we're not, I, I did make a note, and I don't know if this is something we want to add to the PIG, which is to meet with some potential event and parade, um, people, you know, organizers that do that, to understand from their side what it is they need and what their reporting is. So that's something that we could add if that, if that's helpful.
And, and, and I would, I would just add that we're not here to take over the administration's work.
Right.
We're not going to rewrite city regulations. We are just trying to solicit more activities for our neighborhood.
Okay.
Or, or to understand how to solicit.
Is there any other person that hasn't spoken that would like to say something? Go ahead, Mr. Li. You have spoken.
On the motion, thank you. Uh, again, I'm just concerned about the context or the content, rather, of the motion itself. Does it need to include the paragraph on the bottom of the first page so that it's well-defined as we move forward? Because once the PIG starts, you know, we're not gonna hear from the PIG folk again until they tell us that they're ready to report at some point in the future. And they can't change whatever they've been charged to go do. So it could be remedied by a, an amendment to your motion, I'm, I'm not sure. But again, that's why I was asking before, is the scope of the PIG?
Should we differentiate scope of the PIG?
I believe that the scope is defined enough. Um, it, it, I, I feel that it guides the, the direction of the PIG and what it is that we're going to try to find and who we're gonna find it, how we're going to go about finding that information and reporting back to the board.
All right? Yeah. So I, I call for a vote, call for a vote.
Mr. Chair, could you just give us a hint?
Yeah, I was just gonna say we can do a motion to establish and then maybe do a motion to identify who is on the PIG and their roles. We could separate it into two, rather than doing like amendments on amendments. But that's just in some input.
Do we have a rereading of the motion?
Uh, what I wrote down from, uh, Member Armstrong who moved was to establish a permitted interaction group to take a look at bringing more events to downtown Chinatown. And it was seconded by Fitzsimmons at 8:17 PM. On Thursday, February 1st.
Yes, okay, so, I'm sorry. Since we're in discussion, this is not creating new events. These are events that would normally happen in Waikiki and seeing if those events that already have a history of happening in Honolulu could potentially consider, because they get, no, you can't do it in Waikiki. Okay, well, we have an option if you want to consider it. That's, that's what we're looking at. We're not trying to create events from scratch, we're not looking for new events, we're sort of like second, you know, we're sort of second on the menu, almost.
So basically what we're doing is Waikiki right now is trying to get rid of a lot of events that has already been there, but, um, they're making legacy events that's been there for 20 years or plus. But the other ones that have been there maybe for 10 years or longer are told that they will not be able to proceed with their events anymore. So we're just trying to see if they can do it in downtown Chinatown, okay?
No, yeah. So Waikiki never allowed liquor on their streets. The legacy events are 15 years, 20 years, so they have to be approved by, uh, the Waikiki, um, Improvement District and also the Neighborhood Board. They have more hurdles to go through than down here.
No, the, the issue in Waikiki is it's every weekend now.
Yes.
Every weekend in Waikiki. And the residents there, as someone who used to live there, are overwhelmed with inconvenience.
So, um, and Waikiki actually doesn't have, um, liquor in, in those, in, in those events. So I would think, especially for you, Shulon, that you'd be agreeing with this because it's no liquor, just, you know? The, the Waikiki events doesn't have liquor, yeah? Yeah, so...
Chair, I would never allow for myself that there is no, uh, a liquor garden or beer garden so that they can contain and protect the rest of the underage people, that they can manage the liquor. If they have a, a beer...
Yeah. Okay, so what we're gonna do, I'm gonna finish up with Issokane here, and then we're gonna call a vote. All right, so let's call for a vote on this.
Uh, the motion on the table is to establish a permitted interaction group to take a look at bringing more events to downtown Chinatown. Armstrong?
Aye.
Fitzsimmons? That was an aye. Issokane?
Aye.
McDonald?
Aye.
Thank you. McCarty?
Aye.
Li?
Aye.
Shubert Quack? Thank you. Thompson, Carvalho? Motion passes, uh, eight in favor, no nays and zero abstentions. Thank you.
Next, next part, pretty quick, so, because I'm not asking for motion at this time.
So we established the PIG, so we still have to put on a record.
Okay, yeah, yeah. All right, so we pretty asked Lori McCarty to be the Chair, and that was it. Um, Robert Armstrong has agreed to be a member. Is anybody else that wants to be a member for this, to help with this? Shulon Shubert Quack and, um, Sean Fitzsimmons, that's the four. No, 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 I'm chair for this, I'm, yeah. So this way, yeah, so, you four?
Oh, yeah, there's a motion we can have.
I, I have a quick question about like the, uh, roles. Uh, because you've done events, um, it sounds like you'll be taking the lead, um, but just to put it in writing, like for the minutes and for the record, um, we should identify, I guess let's think about it this way. If everyone was taking a different part, hey, I'll go talk to these people or we'll schedule these meetings, you know, that's part of the role and their authority and people shouldn't be overstepping their bounds. So that's why we lay it out early. Um, but if you're gonna primarily take the role on organizing, scheduling meetings with the four of you to all meet together, um, I don't see a real reason to spend time identifying what Mr. Armstrong will do, what Fitzsimmons will do, Shubert Quack, if, if that's the understanding, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's my thought, because I think to flush it out on who exactly, like Shulon will say, we should talk to all these businesses or whatever, you know, fleshing out some of those lists, then scheduling the meetings and who's gonna go to the meetings. I did outline here that every meeting has to be documented.
Yep.
And before the meeting, that, that documentation, we agree who's gonna do that, and then the, everybody on the PIG looks at it, um, before it's presented back to the board, so that we're able to document, we document everything that we do.
All right, so Lori's the Chair of this, they're not, she's taking the lead. So now we have to vote on these members, right? Okay? So, um, is there any objections to this? Hearing none, it's approved. Next, we went on to Chair's report. So there's a proposed border change that, um, I've been talking about with, um, Kalih Palama right now, that includes the, um, China, um, Ala Park, um, 215 North King Street, which is where, um, Candace, um, her husband lives, who's been online with us. Um, also, um, the Senior Center and the Evil A, um, area of where IHS and all that is, yeah? There's a proposed change to take back what is supposed to be Chinatown's area. This is all Chinatown's. Ala Park is actually Chinatown, it's not Kalih Palama. And Kalih Palama is not able to outreach into these areas, yeah? Um, they're so, they're so big that they even said they cannot, um, they're, they're, they don't do anything in these areas, they're not doing anything to help us. So right now, it's just, there's no motion or anything that needs on this. I just wanna state that I am talking with Kalih Palama on this. Um, Professor Moore has reached out to me because Professor Moore actually, um, has moved, um, so he actually lives in the Kalih Palama area. He moves by where I live, yeah? So, um, but he wants to know if I needed his help and I'm gonna ask him for my help on this, yeah? Because we think it's a good idea because we'll probably be more effective as a board in these areas than they are at this point. And plus, this are truly Kalih, um, Chinatown areas, okay?
Just a point of clarification. Um, I understand the Evil A area and, you know, um, where a lot of our social services are. Are you speaking, though, in terms of our most western boundary to be basically from King northward, um, at Leleha? Is that pretty much the, the outer border?
So, yeah, that's the outer border.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's gotta be residents that need to be informed that they're moving if this ever gets...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we know that the, um, NCOs also propose, gonna be proposed and, yeah, the border changes.
So we, we need to really get NCO's approval and then have Kalih, Kalih Palama.
Yeah, so we don't need NCO's approval. So long as Kalih Palama approves and Chinatown, downtown Chinatown approves, then it's a goal, it's written in the, um, Neighborhood Board Plan. goal, it's written in the Neighborhood Board Plan. These two boards, so long as the two board approves, then it moves forward.
Is that, is that correct? I think NCO got approved.
Yeah, but, no, no. Yeah, yeah, so it'll go to the Neighborhood Commission, but the two boards have to agree with, once the Neighborhood Board, two boards of Neighborhood, two Neighborhood Boards agree on it, then it'll go to the Neighborhood Board Commission. That's, that's it. Go ahead.
Changes a lot, because you have the council district, you have...
This has nothing to do with the council district or anything else. This has to do with the Neighborhood Board boundaries, that's it. Yeah, nothing to do with the districts, those districts don't change. You cannot change the district 28 or the council's district or anything, that's state, yeah? Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Chair, two things. You proposing acquiring, if you will, more than just Ala Park itself? You want territory, more of a land grab?
No. So what we, we wanna get what is truly China, what is truly Chinatown, because Kalih Palama has a lot that's in Chinatown. So, growing up here in Hawaii, been born and raised here in Kalih, I know the true boundaries of it. As a kid, somebody from back in the 1960s, yeah? And I understand the boundaries and the Awapua. So we're trying to get back what is actually, should be, the neighborhood of Chinatown. And, so, we wanna go this way, but, you know, I'm not gonna touch the Leleha or anything else. We wanna concentrate on Ala Park and these two areas, because even when people move into 215 King Street, they're told that they live in Chinatown, but yet they belong to Kalih Palama. 215 is the building right across, the one that we went in and saw the art of the old Ala Park and the old railroad station, yeah?
Right. So to be clear, I mean, a motion from this board could start that process, which will have two hearings, ultimately approved by Neighbor Commission Office, but if we had agreement from Kalih Palama Board, it would certainly make it a lot easier.
Right. So, and, and that's all we're looking for. This is just a discussion. I really didn't wanna get deep into this, because I'm gonna talk, I've gotta make the map out, so when I come around the next time, I'll have the map already ready for you guys. I am gonna have all the mapping out.
Mr. Chair, I also have a question.
Oh, okay. Hmm, I'm not sure I like this, because it feels like it's a little bit too far. I understand the buildings and Ala Park, and frankly, I don't care about the old Chinatown. I care about Chinatown downtown. And we're gonna have a lot of new people moving into downtown with all the residential, and there's no attention paid there. I looked at our boundaries, and they go all the way to Punch Bowl, and they include Honolulu Halle, they go all the way to the highway, they go, Foster Botanical Gardens is included. And we never talk, and we never do anything for any of those areas, and now we're talking about more area. And, and right now, we're Chinatown. I mean, we're not, we're not really representing the whole, so anyway, my concern is, we're biting up, we're not handling as well as we might, the area that we have, and handling, adding more could make it even more difficult to us. And I'm wondering, does the Neighborhood Board get bigger, if it's representing more people? You know, there seem to be a lot of different questions about how that might work.
So, once again, this here is exploratory thing. I'm not asking you guys for motion or anything right now. I'm just telling you what we're moving forward with. So, Ala Park, right there, right there, that's Ala Park. That belongs to Kalih Palama. And that should not belong to Kalih Palama. That's definitely Chinatown, this is Chinatown landmark. It was always Chinatown from beginning. So Kalih actually breaks off, so when Dillingham comes down, right, Dillingham comes down and it hits King Street, right? Then when you go over that, that's Leleha Street going all the way up. Kalih is that way. It goes ever of that line. Everything on this side of that line is actually Chinatown. That's how it has always been. No, no, it is true. It's always been Chinatown. That, I, I was born and raised here, and I used to bicycle this out here. You know, I lived at Kaua Mano Housing, and we'd be all the way down this area, they had no problem with that. But, yeah, so the Dillingham and Leleha meets up with King Street. Everything that way is Kalih Palama, everything this way has always been.
So at the same time then, should we take downtown or some of those and give them to the district that is more like that, since it's not Chinatown?
No, this is a downtown Chinatown, right? So downtown includes the Palace, the State Capitol, includes Honolulu Halle, that's all part of downtown.
Mr. Chair, I, I just need to ask a question, and by the way, I, for the record, I speak to Foster Botanical Gardens all the time about our Neighborhood Board, so they are included at least in, in, in my thinking and awareness. My understanding though, is the western boundary of this neighborhood is River Street. So, and I, I get the whole Ala Park stuff, but I wanna make sure that I understand you correctly, and it has always been the highway too. So there's, there's a housing project from River Street to Leleha, Leleha?
Leleha.
Leleha, excuse me, my mouth is not working at this hour. And it goes up to the highway, there's, there's a high-rise and a housing project. Are we proposing, or are you proposing that to be part of our neighborhood?
No, no, so, you're talking about Merrite? Merrite, that's Kalih, that's Kalih.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about north of Vineyard to H1, there's a shopping plaza, and I've never known the, the name of that shopping plaza at Leleha, and, you know, there's, there's, there's a high-rise there, a park, that goes to Ala Street, and it's, it's like one extra block of housing and parkland.
So I believe that it's actually technically Leleha's.
Well, yes, and...
So I'm not, I'm not talking about approaching on Leleha.
But you, but we were going to do it for, for Eva Lake.
What is, because, but that part right there, that's, that's all Leleha right now. So, once, technically, so, once, once you hit Vineyard, right? No, so Baritania, once you hit Vineyard, right? Anything north of Vineyard, right, and all that areas? That is Leleha.
After River Street?
Yeah.
After River Street, right?
Yeah.
So this has gotta be a carve-out for Ala Park and Eva Lake, there's no more?
At this point, yeah. So I'm, we're gonna put the maps down first, that's, I wanna bring the maps and all that. I was just presenting the idea.
I get it, I get it, but I just wanna make sure, geographically, I understand where you're going, because my under, I was under the impression a moment ago, that it included that housing complex?
No.
The shopping center and the high-rise behind it and the park to, to ending at H1?
And, and you're talking about the shopping center where Times and all that is? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's not...
I'm glad, I'm glad we clarified that, thank you.
Okay, I'm taking one more question, because this is only a presentation, it's not a motion or anything else. I will have a full presentation with maps and all that. I just wanted to bring it up, just to gauge it, okay?
So, most people understand Chinatown to include the Foster Garden, the Huangin Temple, and then also the new residence of River Street.
Right.
And you go all the way down, because Ala Park was part of Chinatown Market in the old days. Wine, Japanese Market, and then Eva Lake.
Yeah.
And, and, and then I, I don't think we go to the warehouse.
No, no, no.
Stop at Limit, and then Makai of River, Makai of Vineyard, stop at River.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, I'm just wanting to see, gauge, gauge you guys, this is a, so this is not a motion or anything, when I'm ready to bring this, I will get it, but we're making the maps right now, okay? I just wanted to see what...
Right now it's crazy, because River Street is divided in two, because the dominant side river is Chinatown, the other side river is Kalih. That doesn't make sense.
Okay, so, this is, that's all this was, okay? Just put it on, we will go ahead and bring, bring, bring the maps. I will go ahead and bring the maps, I just wanted to gauge what everybody thought, but so for me, especially Ala Park especially, and it should be part of Chinatown, that, that's a, that's a no-brainer, okay? And then that, I'm just, let me see, so that, just going south, I guess, of Ala Park, not, going, going Maokap, Makai, going Makai of Ala Park, that little area is also Chinatown.
Sorry. Can the map include the information about what's in those, what's in that area?
Yeah.
How many warehouses, how many...
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, so we're not going into the warehouses.
No, but I just want that we understand.
Okay. Alright, yeah, so we'll, I'll go ahead and, once we get the maps put together, next week, next month, we'll go ahead and have it, I'll have it on the Google Drive, probably a week before the agenda goes out to you guys, yeah? And speaking of the agenda, when I send the agenda to you guys ahead of time, I do it for several reasons. One for you folks to check at for me, to make sure that the agenda looks correct, and if you guys have any question.
Agenda.
Yeah, that's, but nobody said no, but no one said nothing to me about it, I caught that on my own. Yeah, I had the December agenda, no one said nothing to me, I caught it on my own. And then that's why I changed it then, so I do apologize. Alright, so next, so yeah, so next we're gonna go ahead and we're moving forward. So next, I wanna talk about the community walk, just real quick, just wanna say thank you once again to everybody, the community walk was a success, I appreciate everybody that came out. Tyler and I would like to do another community walk in April, around April 20th, we'll get back to you on that. And then I would like to remind everybody that tomorrow, we have the Lunar New Year's celebration from 5 to 10 at the Culture Plaza, and on, in Chinatown itself, road closures will be going back and forth as they do firecrackers and blessings, okay? So, that would end that. Everyone, we are in the parade, I put us in the parade, so we have, please join us in the parade, we have the banner and all that. The, um, the parade is at 4:30. Uh-huh? Oh, so we, the one I said 3:30. Yeah, the one I said at 3:30, yeah. Yeah, just like last year, 3:30. I'm wearing my black one, so.
3:30 in front of Ross?
No, the State Capitol, Richard Street, yeah, on Richard Street.
Um, on, 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 on.
Okay? 3:30 in Richard Street. Yeah, you have, Richard Street, right by the Capitol, right? Like, same place we was last year. I have the banner, I'll be bringing the banner, okay? Alright? So, so, um...
Forgive me, Chair, forgive me, Chair, but did I, and it's maybe my mistake, but did I miss the meeting where the organizers of the Lunar New Year came to us for approval of their event?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Okay? Alright, I'm getting ready to close, how can I help you?
Thank you, Chair. Comments on item in business 7B? Out of an abundance of precaution, as per HRS 92-2.5 subsection E, I just want to document that I was with you and several other members of the board at the meeting, even though it wasn't a technical Neighbor Board 13 event, I, my reading of the statute says that we should announce that we were there, and we discussed in things that may have become in the future board business, yes, the walk this past Saturday, 27th, January.
But, so, as far as the next event that is going to be in April, just so you know, we are tending to make it, and ask the board to make it a boardwalk. The Neighborhood, we're asking Neighborhood Board 13 to approve to make this, because what we wanna also do is, we wanna do one of our cleanups involved, because remember we, we got the paints and everything else, right? No, that's the 13th, ours is the 20th. So, because we wanna, we spent a thousand dollars on these things for cleanup, and so we're thinking about doing that. So we're still thinking about it, but we're gonna make it a downtown Chinatown event. That's the difference. The one I did, I did not make it Chinatown, but we're gonna make this a Chinatown downtown event. Okay? Alright, anything else? Okay, announcements. Yeah? Announcements. The next downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board number 13 regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 7, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM at Kaili Okalani Middle School and virtually via WebEx. WebEx, YouTube, you can archive the video recordings on Neighborhood Board meetings can be found at, on YouTube tomorrow morning, definitely. Rebirth of Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board number 13 meetings are scheduled on O'Leiloe Channel 49 every third Thursdays at 9 o'clock AM, as well as 9 o'clock AM on the fourth Saturday of each month. An archive of the past meetings may be found on O'Leiloe.net. Alright? This, this meeting is now adjourned at 9, 8:46. Thank you.